The July ninth, 2024 meeting of the Eugene Water and Electric Board. Let's start with a facility and safety awareness and meeting logistics briefing, just for those who are here tonight in person. Thank you for being here. Eweb management and subject matter experts are present in the room and virtually. Meeting is live streamed and recorded. Please let me speak loudly and clearly so everyone can hear you. Public testimony is welcome. Sign up forms are available in the back of the room. Over here for those that would like to provide publicly testimony. That's a couple of items down in our agenda. Visitor access is limited to the board meeting room and restrooms. The restrooms are located on the first floor. Exit through the interior door here in the back of the room and a security officer will direct you to the restrooms. In the event of an emergency such as a fire or a security incident, please follow all instructions given by staff. If evacuation is required, please calmly proceed to the nearest safe exit as directed by staff and evacuate away from the building to the farthest points of the parking lots to allow access for first responders. And with that, we're gonna just jump right into our agenda. Start with an agenda check. Any changes or questions about the agenda before we get going? Not hearing any, moving on. Items from board members and general manager.
Luckily, the city council invited us last night to lovely pitcher work to give up the lovely headquarters building, so they have a very beautiful city hall. Recommend anybody who hasn't been there to go check it out. It looks drastically different than what we used to sit in, so it's a very nice space. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, just to follow up on what Sony said, I was there last night on John B. Borowski. And if you haven't been there, they're having an official open house on the eighteenth. But that board room, I mean, I sat there for sixteen years, I've never seen anything like that. It was amazing and they've absolutely done an incredible job with it. And I'm sure they've done the rest of the technology and the way it sits and everything. The crowd can see the river and the board and council can see the river, which are pretty nice, so.
Anything from you?
Yeah, I was just gonna comment on the city of Eugene's gift. It really was a gift to the organization and the collaboration with staff. And so I wanted to pass along to staff as well as the board. The appreciation that was, that has been shown by the city for the acquisition and the transition that has occurred with the Eweb and what is now the Riverfront City Hall and really wanted to appreciate the city for that, but also wanted to appreciate staff for having a really good relationship and working well with the city to make that happen. So thanks to commissioners and thanks to staff for that.
And Vice President John Borowski is joining us tonight by phone. His image is on the back of the wall here. Anything from you, Borowski?
Yeah, just a couple of things. One, I attended the McKenzie watershed council. We're doing a lot of good work up there in collaboration with the council and the trust and a bunch of other agencies and partners up there. So that's going along well. Just a technological thing. Commissioner Brown, when you turned your camera on, on your computer, it basically, I've got a huge, I've got your face huge. And then there, and then the rest of the room was, so you're still there, you're huge. There we go, that's better. And it goes to whoever's speaking, so that works well. Just, just new technology and a remote user using it, so thank you.
For the record, I just turned my camera off.
Yep, and I see you right now talking and it works great.
Great, thank you. And I attended remotely for our last meeting. I just want to thank Vice President Borowski for facilitating the meeting and, and you all for putting up mine with my attendance by phone because my bandwidth was not sufficient to make video work. So thank you all for making that work on my end. It actually was pretty seamless, so I appreciate the new technology in this room. I feel like it's a huge upgrade. Anyway, so thank you. All right, moving to correspondence.
Commissioners, there were two items of correspondence. One is part of board policy SD twenty. It's an annual report on just various risk assessments that we go through across the organization. There are a plethora of risks that we mitigate in various ways. And this is an annual report to you as to various issues that we are considering and addressing in different forms. And so wanted to thank Rod and Sarah and Ken for that information. And then the other one was an operational update relative to compliance with revised lead and copper rule revisions and where we are with that, which is really excellent news that there's no known lead in the Eweb system. It also includes an inventory on the customer side of the meter of, not including the inside the house, but when we do go out and assess meters, we had to do as part of this work, some sampling of the customer side. So, and that, that is part of an ongoing process that, that we do, that is continuing.
Yeah, there's this customer side service line identifying the material.
The service line materials, yes.
I have a quick question on the lead and copper rule revisions. It sounds like there's some pretty straight requirements that we have to meet and we're on track to meet those. It's good to hear there's no less, or at least not sufficiently substantial lead in our system. I'm curious with these requirements, are there funds from the state to help us do the assessment work that's required?
I believe there are funds for small systems. I don't believe there are funds for systems our size.
Thanks.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. So I know we did a random sampling. I'm sure it was advised by Paul Page and kind of sort of thing. Is there, is there any mechanism that citizens, if they were curious about it, they could get it tested? Or is there any reason for stat, like for just regular residents to go and test on their own if they weren't part of this?
Yes, we can sample for them if they want to reach out to our water quality line. We can put them on a list for folks with homes that were built before, I believe it's June thirtieth of nineteen eighty-three. Those are the homes that are at risk for lead solder. And those would be the ones that we would target for sampling.
Any before eighty-three? I read some, I thought there was something in there about nineteen forty. Is it between forty and eighty-three, or just anything before eighty-three?
For lead service lines, it would be even older homes, so nineteen forty, yes. But for lead solder, the man came and I think it was June, please don't quote me on it, but I think it's June thirtieth, nineteen eighty-three.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to public input. We have six people signed up. If anybody hasn't signed up but wants to testify tonight, now is the time to throw your name on the list. Well, I'm giving you a bit of overview on the public input. And so I'll, welcome to the public input session for this meeting. This portion of the agenda is dedicated to providing community members with an opportunity to address the board about any Eweb topic or issue. We respectfully request all speakers adhere to Eweb's public input instructions and code of conduct that are provided during the sign up to speak process. They're also here on, on the screen if you haven't seen them. This time we have six people signed up to provide testimony, including one caller. When your name's called, you'll have three minutes to provide your comments. There's a timer here in the front to help you keep track. So now starting the public inset input session, we'll begin with Kathy Geng by phone, followed by Carla Herbert. Kathy? And Kathy, we can't hear you, so don't forget to pound six to unmute your microphone.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We sure can, go ahead Kathy.
Okay, thank you. I am, I invite you to listen to three for one more day or buy and listen to a new docu-series, Mind Control and Fifth Generation Warfare, organized by Sarah Westall. I heard episodes including Harvard Law professor, governor, government insiders and women journalists, and had my consciousness raised about the increasing invasion of tech in our lives and business. Now, we all know positive history, but many are unaware that Oregon's largest publicly owned utility has failed in the tragedy of the commons to provide distributed generation via micro grids, community solar, home site solar, as intrinsic, intrinsic strategy meeting resilience and triple bottom line means. If grids fail due to hackers, noted in OSU Department of Engineering twenty-three study, Eweb will not be able to provide even a modicum of power because if its head was stuck in the clouds in the planning stage and they relied on top-down dictatorial management decisions instead of engaging positively with one of the most environmentally aware and intelligent US customer bases. Now finding their wanton, even nasty strategies being spread across the nation appalled, appalling the people when this utility was once a paragon. Regarding smart meter implementation, policies rate payers considered to be legacy created and crafted over several years by Eugene's finest medical and IT professionals. Citizens, including Eweb commissioners, one who had worked on staff for forty years, then on board, who made it clear the customers should have an analog installed, even if initially opting for digital. A legacy reversed capriciously under the current GM, February two thousand and eighteen, with the help of the board, then mutated again early in two thousand and twenty-four. Only one time, the former Eweb manager Roger Gray, he curiously became GM, although a former VP of PG&E, one of the most vilified utilities. He used the word social engineering to describe wireless digital smart meters. If this angle had been fleshed out, it may have caught people's attention. Those who read books like Age of Surveillance Capitalism by a Harvard professor emeritus understand the gravity of ensuing issues that can result from granular information collected with unexpected consequences. These include Fourth Amendment violation of privacy. A big reason why my Georgetown educated attorney brother questioned his tech in homes when brought to his attention in two thousand and eleven.
Thanks Kathy.
Okay, thank you very much, bye.
Thank you Kathy. Next is Carla Herbert, followed by Joshua Kohn.
Hi, my name is Carla Herbert, introducing for Carla Herbert and my husband Fred Herbert. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Both my spouse and myself are electromagnetic radiation or RF radio frequency sensitive to both the smart digital meters and will, and the meters will and do affect our health in a negative way. That is why we must keep our analog meters. We both have had serious neurological damage from previous illnesses diagnosed by several neurologists and are both at risk of exacerbation of neurological symptoms with exposure to EMS on a continual basis with the meters committing this electricity. I developed Guillain-Barre syndrome after required immunization as a nurse and was wheelchair bound for almost a year. After a long rehab process, I have been able to return to most of my activities. But I do have some residual issues. My husband developed peripheral neuropathy after tetanus shot and has numbness and tingling in his feet and a kenlin at his daily activities of daily living. Both of our neuropathies are exacerbated by EMF exposure. We did fill out a declaration for ADA, both of us. So Eweb turned off our power on May twenty-second, seven weeks ago. Gotta love this heatwave for not accepting a smart meter on our house. We had to pay two hundred and fifty dollars for discontinuing our service, though we didn't ask for our service to be stopped. We received a very nasty letter from Eweb on May fourteenth accusing us of threatening or aggressive behavior. I'll read a paragraph from that. The letter is to inform us that based on our non-acceptance of the standard meter, Eweb will disconnect your service without further notice unless we take immediate action. Okay, additionally, this is from Eweb. We have received reports and evidence indicating someone at this service address has engaged in threatening or aggressive behaviors towards Eweb staff or threats to damage utility equipment. Due to the severity of the reported incidents, you are disqualified from electing manual metering. So we are being punished, so now we can't have a non-communicating meter and we're being punished for aggressive or threatening behavior, which we had not. Anytime I called Eweb to see when they were gonna come reset meter, I talked to somebody. So this was very nasty and very wrong that you're threatening public for no reason whatsoever. So we didn't have too many other options, so we are now in a lawsuit against Eweb with other plaintiffs. Our attorney responded to Eweb's attorney Eric DeFreeze saying that it would be like a trivial task to put on our electricity or power back since we are in the middle of an injunction, since we still have.
I send in the three minutes. Thanks Carla. And Joshua Korn.
Like Carla, you guys have accused me of, of threatening you with physical violence, which has never happened and you know it's never happened. If it had happened, why have I been coming here for over a decade? I've been coming to these board meetings. There's never been any threats of physical violence. Clearly, I would have been arrested if there had been. So why, why create this false testimony in the legal proceedings? It's just ridiculous and, and frankly, I consider it slander. So we'll see where that goes. My only threats the whole time have been legal and you know this. This is ongoing and it's gonna keep going until we win. You claim that a smart meter emits less radiation than a mobile as some sort of justification to radiate my home with, with this smart meter that you have now installed on my home. But you are clearly unaware that a lot of us put our phones in these, in these Faraday bags, use things like an air tube headset to minimize, minimize our exposure to radiation and put the phones in airplane mode all the time unless we're receiving text messages or on a rare occasion, making a phone call. And, and it's like, if you want to radiate yourselves in your home environment, then go ahead and do it. You know, that's, that's your, that's your free will. And, but, but for you to force it on us and act like this is some justification, then that's just, that's just ridiculous. So, so, so again, so stop assaulting us with your radiating smart meters. Again, you, you, you use this as some justification to not have my meter turned off. That's just completely ridiculous. You need to turn off the meter and put it in non-transmitting mode. Like plenty of other Eugene residents have already received meters that are working in that fashion. So, yeah, and, 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 and by the way, you know, I've been coming here for, for years where, you know, speaking against this, there's a number of us who have been coming here since two thousand and thirteen, speaking out against these meters. Where are, where are all the people speaking in favor of them? Obviously, these are not popular technologies. This is, this, I mean, even Eweb employees don't seem to a hundred percent agree with this, this whole plan that you guys have and universally support this thing. It just proves that, that this technocratic future that Eweb is part of rolling out is not popular among the public. Thank you.
Next is Danny Noonan, followed by Mark Grabinowitz. What's Danny Noonan?
Followed by Mark Grabinowitz. Forgot to tell you who was on deck last time. President McCray, Eweb commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to give comments. My name is Danny Noonan. I'm a climate and energy strategist with the local nonprofit Reach Collective and I'm a resident of Ward Seven in the Whittaker. On July second, I sent the commissioners a letter signed by eighteen community organizations and that letter called on Eweb to expand its low income electrification subsidies, implement more progressive and equitable rate design reforms and improve community outreach and engagement. I believe some of my colleagues are gonna speak to those first two points, but I'd like to speak to the last thing with the time I have here this evening, which is about improving community outreach and engagement. Through my work, I've formed relationships with a number of colleagues from around the country who are working on campaigns to municipalize the investor-owned utilities within their service territory. And they're working on this because they recognize the potential that a democratically controlled utility has to be a linchpin in efforts to combat climate change and chart a path to a one hundred percent clean energy future. So they envy the situation that we have in Eugene and I personally have a lot of gratitude and see a lot of potential for Eweb as utility that is beholden to the community rather than being beholden to, to give some real world examples, BlackRock or the sovereign wealth fund of Portugal. However, I, I do think there is even more that Eweb could and should be doing to not only deliver services in an accountable manner, but to be seen to be doing so. And that is the thrust of the recommendations in that part of the letter. And I'm just gonna speak to one of those recommendations in particular, which is about creating a community advisory panel. I'm aware that Eweb has received and continues to receive some intense criticism from a section of the community on a particular topic. And so I might be leery of creating more channels for public input. But I would encourage commissioners to see a stipended advisory channel with specifically dedicated divisions for different sections of the community as a way to make sure that you are hearing from a broad range of stakeholders, not just those that have the time, availability, means and proclivities to turn up at these meetings. So in short, this part of the letter, and in some sense, the letter as a whole is asking the commissioners to envision a larger role for our utility, one that of a truly keystone public institution and a leader in achieving an equitable energy transition. So I hope you take that recommendation into account, even though it's one of the shorter ones, and also give some consideration to the more technical recommendations that were contained within it. Thank you.
Next is Mark Grabinowitz, followed by Dennis Horner.
The group that is suing Eweb about the smart meters is represented by an attorney who is also trying to stop mail-in ballots in Oregon, a reflection of far-right talking points. He's also sued on behalf of a pediatrician who correctly had his medical license revoked by the state of Oregon due to his malpractice. He had counseled parents not to immunize their kids. The Facebook site of this group has a long list of hoaxes about public health, which makes it hard to take seriously their concerns about radio frequency energy. If there are real claims, it's hard to notice them when they're mixed with extreme denial about public health, lacking discernment on scientific evidence. Their Facebook page even promotes a group that claims polio virus is not a problem, which is the biology equivalent of flat earth. Here in Lake County, we are fortunate to have had one of the lowest COVID death rates in the country, while Douglas County had one of the highest COVID death rates due to far-right, far-wrong disinformation. Today, former Senator James Inhofe died, most notable for being a leading opponent of admitting climate chaos is real. He also left Congress because he caught long COVID despite being vaccinated, a reason to take the disease seriously. It's notable that nearly all the Republican leadership was first in line to get protected. And even if the rank and file chose to remain unprotected and they died disproportionately. Two resources you may find of use to understand this phenomenon, the Conspirituality podcast and Naomi Klein's new book, Doppelganger, about the convergence of new age movements with far-right politics. And this distracts from the real reason for smart meters, which is that they can impose rolling brownouts or blackouts if or when there won't be enough electricity to move demand. Natural gas is the largest energy source for the Western power grid, WEP, which I'm sure you all know what that is. And hydroelectric is not increasing because all the best sites to be dammed were damped along time. This gas resource is sustained by fracking. Since conventional gas peaked in nineteen seventy-three, it has declined two-thirds since and now three-fourths of the natural gas is fracked. Turning off electric hot water heater for a short while might not cause disruption, but as the climate destabilizes and natural gas depletes, we face a future of constrained energy, which means we need to think about how to reduce demand, not how to find new sources to meet our overconsumption. And there's more to say, but that's enough.
Next is Dennis Horner, followed by Dylan Plummer.
Hi, my name is Dennis Horner and I've spoken to you before. On June twenty-seventh, the Eugene Weekly published a letter to the editor I wrote, which I will read in a slightly shortened version. To the editor, I am one of the smart meter resistors you implicitly ridiculed with your snarky reference to tinfoil hats. There are a lot of us, very different individuals who nonetheless have a common purpose trying to stop Eweb's irresponsible smart meter mandate and reprehensible enforcement actions. In two thousand and thirteen, Eweb commissioners adopted a statement of principles for the Advanced Metering Infrastructure Project that included, quote, "Customers should be able to refuse the installation of a smart meter. Develop programs and services that give customers choice, not mandates." That principle is exactly what we are asking we, Eweb, to return to. Besides choosing now to ignore the numerous smart meter health, safety and privacy issues, Eweb has harassed its ratepayer owners by sending threatening letters and emails, dispatching security guards to our homes and even shutting off many people's power, including seniors with significant health issues. Because Eweb has reversed course and dismissed its customers' valid concerns and acted aggressively against us, we have had to resort to legal action. People elsewhere in Oregon and in other states from California to Maine have been challenging the lockstep imposition of dangerous smart meters on our homes. Education matters. Our website, familiesforsafetechnology.org, provides local information and useful resources. A comprehensive site I recommend is smartmetereducationnetwork.com. I encourage your readers to learn the details of what this technology involves, end of letter. And you too, commissioners, refer to the handout that I brought for you tonight that gives lots of inconvenient facts for you that you should know about. Sadly, the article that, about this controversy that the Weekly published quoted Eweb public relations statements ninety-five percent of the time and just a couple of critics very briefly. That imbalance of coverage is typical of all the media. I only have time left to point out one of your egregious PR ploys, the so-called opt-out. A rose by any other name would smell just as sweet. A smart meter by any other name, such as transmission turned off, is still a smart meter and is still stinks. Any smart meter causes significant dirty electricity in home wires and even with the radio turned off, it still collects usage data and it still emits RF radiation. Worst of all, your customers have been told that you cannot, you will not guarantee in writing that the non-transmitting meter won't at some point be turned on. All it takes is another backstabbing turnabout by some future board. Thank you.
Just Dylan Plummer, followed by Samuel Tipping.
President McCray, Eweb commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to testify. My name is Dylan Plummer and I work at the Sierra Club and I'm also a resident of Ward Two here in Eugene. I'm here testifying on behalf of the Sierra Club's thousands of members and supporters that live within the city of Eugene and to voice our strong support to advance the speed. and to voice our strong support to advance the speed of policies that will reduce greenhouse gas emissions, ensure the largest energy users in our community are paying a fair share, and protect the most vulnerable members of our community. While my colleagues will cover some of the other policy recommendations that Dan Union has already spoken to some of them, uh, in the letter we submitted to the board earlier this month, I'm going to focus my comments on rate reforms specifically in our recommendations to, one, establish progressive rate design to ensure large commercial energy users are paying a fair share, and, two, replace the current bill assistance program with percentage of income payment plans or PIPs. Um, as communities across the nation take steps to reduce emissions and to electrify homes and buildings, many other publicly owned utilities are already implementing progressive rate design measures designed to protect those least able to pay for high energy bills while asking larger commercial users and wealthier residential users to pay more. Excessive energy burdens force Eugene residents oftentimes to choose between paying electricity bills and paying rent, buying food, and accessing healthcare. Twenty-five percent of all households in the United States experience high energy burden, paying over six percent of their income on utility bills. Thankfully, progressive ratemaking policies can alleviate existing energy burdens while also ensuring that historically disadvantaged communities see reductions in future energy costs as Eugene homes and housing transition from polluting, frac gas, and other fossil fuels to renewable electricity. One of the easiest means to reduce energy burden on low and moderate income households is modifying base service charges to lower residential charges while raising commercial and industrial charges. In addition to revising the distribution of base service charges across residential and commercial tiers, E-Web could explore an income-graduated fixed charge approach to ratemaking, which is gaining popularity in other jurisdictions. For example, this year, California's Public Utility Commission established a residential income-graduated fixed charge system for the largest three electric investor-owned utilities in the state, creating three income-based tiers for residential customers in California, um, who are customers of that, of those three utilities. Another approach compatible to protect low-income households from increasing costs is the establishment of a percent of income payment program or PIP. When, while E-Web already has a bill assistance program in place, it's a one-size-fits-all stipend, and a PIP offers a tailor-made solution in order to protect um ratepayers by tailoring the amount that they're paying based on their salary. Um, we look forward to discussing solutions I mentioned, as well as others that are detailed in the letter in more depth of view at individual meetings. Thank you very much for your time, and I'm sorry I've got to run after this.
Uh, next is Samuel Tepe, followed by Alan Alfredo.
I am here, present here for the first time, speaking in front of all of you souls. And I see diminished light in your eyes. I don't understand perhaps what the apathy is, but maybe the collective consciousness where you all are feeling a pride for being stood upon a board, seated upon a board. You are understanding the most controversial topic here in the atmospheres of the smart meters. Why is this defiance where you are starting lawsuits with people, turning people power off in the middle of any season? What is the health benefit of the smart, smart meter? If either public, this public service is not healthful, what, what are you here doing other than harming people? And understanding that we are all people, we all have biological functions, circadian rhythms, tuning into these natural rhythms is absent of turning on a meter and having your own life be in touch with the natural cycles of plants. Roll your eyes. You and your assaulting.
No, 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 we can't, we can't tolerate that. If you'll clean, if you'll clean your language, you can finish.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it is a violent, aggressive, rollout tyrannical situation. And permitting me to speak for three minutes on behalf of humanity's soul as, as the only agenda that you all have here that keeps you straight-faced is the profit-driven reality that is creating your livelihood. I really, really want to point out the karmic disposition when somebody's children is being harmed by your own complacency with the system. So as much as you will gang up on the community and act like this is some sort of of permitted democratic experience, like, really, from a standpoint of somebody who is nervous, system is obviously shaking here in the sense that like, it doesn't take that much sense to consider what is healthy. And is it healthy to put your child next to a radiation device? Is it healthy to put your head next to a radiation device? Why in the X-ray room are they giving us gear to protect ourselves from radiation? This is as simple as anything. We have never seen this sort of technology. There isn't accurate information you're proving to me that is, that this is safe in any sense. And no apologies for the woman to roll her eyes.
Next is Alan Garizano, followed by Zach Mulholland.
Well, again, and yes, indeed, I feel so strongly about this issue that I rode my bicycle through this heat, through this vast desert to get out here. Um, you know, smart meters about efficiency. Who made the trains run perfectly on time in Germany when all they thought about was efficiency, Adolf Hitler? The technology, the science that we use to create these laptops, that science, the predecessor to that science was used to keep track of people at concentration camps. Science gave us nuclear weapons, gave us biological warfare, gave us all kinds of horrible things, just pure, pure science. We need science with morality, with consciousness, with awareness of the effects that it has on humans. If we don't go that direction, we're in danger of running the same route that Germany went in the nineteen thirties. We don't want to go there. You don't want to do that to your own people here. You know, we also talk about the fees. Yes, a graduated fee for income levels for your, for your services would be wonderful. Like I said in my other meetings, like, what's this electricity delivery charge for it? I don't see anyone coming to my house with a wheelbarrow full of electricity. You know, it's like, it's coming through the lines already. You're charging me for that. Why this adage? Why the service charge? It's killing people like me. And then also another thing of, I'm not science and just pure science versus science with more awareness. I spent the last, well, up till October, I spent six and three-quarter years straight on Hawaii Island through the pandemic. We had a quarantine, which worked wonderfully. Uh, our rates were really low. When did our rates get high? When vaccinated people started coming to the island. It didn't stop the spread. It kept the spread. It actually created a spread on the islands. Uh, if what it did maybe for some people was it might have lowered the intensity of the disease, lowered the chances of death. But to force it among people, that's what is pushing these new agers over to the far right because they were the only ones that were listening, like, I have a healthy body. My whole life I've worked with herbs and energetic healing in myself. I used to do acupressure as a living. And for me to have some vaccine thrown into my body that I don't know what it's going to do really in the long run? No, thank you. I did it without that. I used herbs when I caught COVID. I knocked that intensity down overnight and half, just using some herbs I had picked on Hawaii Island. So we can't just think purely of silence, purely of efficiency. We've got to think about the human effect of what we're doing here. And yes, people are affected by the radio frequencies from these smart meters, whether they're on or off. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Next is Zach Mulholland.
Hello, E-Web commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, my name is Zach Mulholland. Uh, I've been working on the Bethel Clean Energy Project, trying to connect a lot of households in the Bethel area near J H Baxter with energy-efficient appliances and weatherization upgrades and connecting them to existing resources. Uh, we find that I find a number of gaps in E-Web's existing rebate programs that could help expand the uptake of those programs, uh, including that low-income natural gas customers are currently rebates, uh, that the local terms could be extended and then allowed to moderate income customers allowed to access them and making the heat pump water heater program more streamlined. Uh, so first, low-income natural gas customers in Eugene are not able to access E-Web's low-income rebates uh because of how the state has separated rebates for natural gas customers and E-Web customers. Uh, but natural gas customer, low-income natural gas customers being able to get the same deal that all electric customers are currently able to get, uh, would incentivize them to make that transition. Extending loan terms from four or five years to ten years for gas customers would also make it more in their financial interest. Uh, not only would it lower upfront cost, it would allow them to pay those costs over a longer period of time and allow the energy cost savings to help pay uh the entire cost of that project over that longer time period. Uh, currently, only low-income customers are able to get both rebates and loans. If you're moderate or higher income, you have to choose between a rebate or a zero percent interest loan. And if moderate, higher-income customers were able to access both rebates and loans at the same time, uh, that it would really incentivize them and help them make that transition for some very large expensive projects. Uh, in terms of making the uh programs uh more streamlined and easier to access for the heat pump water heater program, if you're in an emergency water heater situation, ordering uh heat pump online and waiting ten or more days for it to arrive is really not a viable option. So if there were heat pump water heaters that could actually be picked up uh at E-Web rather than having to order them and wait for them to arrive, uh, for those emergency situations would be valuable, as well as trying to create a all-in-one program where uh installations included, so doing an RFP for installations for heat pump water heaters, tying that together with your existing purchase agreement with General Pacific so that a customer could get their rebate, uh, their low-income rebate, the zero percent interest loan, and the installation and purchase all rolled into one package for a low monthly fee built into their energy bill, that it would make it much simpler uh and more streamlined for those low-income customers, especially in an emergency situation, to take that opportunity rather than trying to navigate, find a water heater, getting multiple bids, and waiting potentially weeks to take all happen. Thank you.
That concludes the public session. Uh, so at this point, we have an opportunity for commissioners to make comments. We don't, um, by policy, engage in a back-and-forth. Um, but comments from commissioners. Borowski.
Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you all for coming out and giving testimony tonight. I just have to say something that, that I feel very uncomfortable about. Uh, Alan, when you made references to our board, our organization, and comparisons to Nazi Germany and Adolf Hitler, I felt was very not appropriate, and it makes me not want to take your serious testimony to heart. When you start making those comparisons, I think that is a, is absolutely disingenuine. And I just had to say that because the people that are sitting in front of you as board members and staff are working hard for our community, where the board members are unpaid elected volunteers. And if there's an issue with us, there is a, a way to get rid of us, and that's vote us or recall us. But by comparing us to Nazi Germany and the things that we're doing, I, it was just inappropriate, and I just had to say that. I'm sorry.
A technocratic future is absolutely a comparison with Nazi Germany, no question.
Thank you, Borowski. Anything else from you? All right, thanks. Comments from others? Brown.
Yeah, thank you all for coming out and seeing me. A couple of things. Um, Carl, I know you had written testimony and you didn't get to finish it. So we have, I don't go back and forth, but if that's something you want to submit to our staff, and then they can distribute it to us, we can hear the rest of what you want to say. So I'm sorry.
Well, I timed it tonight, obviously.
Just so you know that there's that opportunity. Thank you very much. And, uh, Mark, thank you very much for your information. I always think that what you have to present, whether I agree or don't agree, is, is good, and it's, it's, I think it's factual. So thank you very much. Zach, thank you very much for telling us something like that. I noticed, I don't know if you noticed on our agenda, we have another quarter of a million dollars for the funds and, and the program. And so how that will work with what we're doing is, uh, is very kind. We can, uh, thank you, and thank you for your efforts. I'm sure we'll get, thank you.
Um, yeah, likewise, thank you for those of you who took time to come here and testify. Um, for those that are looking at uh rate design, I just call your attention that that's on our agenda for next month. Do you want to say more about that?
There's a, a number of things that, that relate to the letter that we received. Um, some of those are things that are upcoming. Some of them are in various stages of review and taking a look at. We have rate design scheduled for August, and then I think again in October.
So. Great. Uh, yeah, appreciate the comments. And that's it. So we'll move um on to our next agenda item, Consent Calendar A. Moved by Brown, second by Schlossberg, uh, all in support of adopting Consent Calendar A. Say aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. Moving to approval of Consent Calendar B. Brown.
I'd like to hopefully say and apologize to staff that I didn't get a chance to fully read all your responses to my questions, but I'd like to pull five, eight, and eleven.
All right. Remaining?
Moving the remainder of Consent Calendar B minus five, eight, and eleven. Moved. Is there a second? Second by Brown, and all in support, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimously, so moving to five, eight, eleven.
Okay, fourth motel, we'll hold these EV car sharing programs. Um, it's a great program. Uh, could somebody help me measure how we determine it's successful? There's no metric in there. I mean, I looked at the usage on the pilot program. We had minimal usage by some, and then, you know, almost thirty-eight hundred hours by, at I was placed. And so we're going to expand this program for over quarter of a million dollars, but how do we know? Is there a threshold, a benchmark, or how do we know that this is working and it's meeting our expectations of, uh, of that, and we're not just paying three hundred fifty thousand dollars for cars to sit there?
Yeah, I'm going to defer initially to either Julie or Anna and, or Juan, looks like he, he appeared. And then, um, I may have some follow-up comments.
Go ahead, Juan.
Yeah, good afternoon, uh, members of the public, commissioners, and fellow staff, uh, general manager. So the car-sharing effort uh that we started back a few years ago initially was to help people who perhaps may not be willing to go to like a dealership or engage in kind of like in a more pressured environment to purchase an electric vehicle or evaluate one. And those who just may not have that opportunity to get a chance to test drive them. And then as we saw what was happening in the multifamily sector, but we started seeing that really the advantage was to bring accessibility to a population that perhaps cannot afford the regular vehicle ownership model. Uh, and we started, it was, there's quantitative data, which is some of the numbers that we shared, but there's a lot of qualitative data on the feedback. We actually got one uh yesterday, uh, just customers, the accessibility that this program is bringing. And like limited income programs such as energy efficiency, where you see that we spend sometimes over ten times the amount of money that on the commercial side we were spending. It's the metric, I would say, it's, it's more than the number of utilization, but how it is affecting and allowing individuals who otherwise could not afford uh to purchase an electric vehicle. And so for this program, we have the metrics that we share, but I think we have to go beyond that to see again, the asset that it's providing, and we have some quotes and information that we can provide, but we can look at other metrics as well. Um, and, and bring that information back to you. I'm looking at some of the information that we have on utilization, and you can see that on Irish Place, I think it's one point five the amount of utilization, for example, that Santa Clara had. Broadway South, uh, there were submissions with the vehicle. And so the amount of limit, there was more limited data in that specific place, and that's why the numbers are a little bit lower than the other locations. But again, this is really has become a social equity accessibility program and effort more so uh than trying to increase EV adoption. And for EV adoption, we, we have other programs like the test drive events, increasing our incentives on like the multifamily sector for charging infrastructure on the residential sector and make-ready programs. On the residential sector and make ready programs that we are also expanding to support the upgrades that are needed so that it's not a burden on the customers. So I think there's two different um, paths that we're taking and this is again. More on the social equity and accessibility to a technology that otherwise would be unreachable for several populations due to the cost primarily.
Alright, well, I'm just, thank you very much, but I'm just confused a bit because I noticed it's a two year period. We had 29 people use it. Uh, and drove almost 10, 9,000 miles and that utilization rate, if you. Do it and look at the cost per spend it, now we're going to put another 375,000 into it. Um, is there a, a metric that you want to meet to, to, that, that's my concern is that just go out and whether it's. 29 people in two years or it's 100 people in two years, where's that threshold is where you can say this is working? Or this isn't working or this is worth the expenditure because we're going to be into it for, you know, 400,000 bucks before this gets too far.
Yeah, and so. Yes, the 29 users, um, the Santa Clara station, I, they all kind of have the same amount of users, but. What would be aiming for is more hours driven on the multifamily sectors. Uh, rather than necessarily the amount of users, like for example Iris Place has, I think 50 units. So we would like to see a higher utilization from those, from the multifamily's uh, buildings, for example, we're expanding to Iris Place. So a metric that we would look to for. A successful program would be more to match the ratio of the units of the, of the complex to the amount of users. But really is the miles driven and the hours as well. Um. The new location that is going to be on Peace Village, which is on River Road, I think that has 75 units. And so that's what we would be targeting. But again, it, it's, it's a difficult metric to, it's a difficult program to evaluate in that way. Um, because the success is not so much about how many users are using it, but how effective, how much it's helping those individuals who are able to use it. But the cost is high. Um, and it, it, it comes like most. Programs that are offered accessibility, they come at a much, much higher cost than others. But again, the metric that we'll likely be looking at in the future is to match the number of residents to number of users and trying to increase that. And the feedback that we actually got yesterday was that a lot of people may not be aware of the effort, one lady that provided uh, that feedback. And so I think we send marketing is definitely going to take place and more efforts in that way to try to bring other individuals. Who may not realize that these vehicles are available and definitely have more. At the multifamily locations, more marketing to be added to ensure that those individuals are able to try. Some of the comments that we had was that I had no idea that this was for me. I thought this was something different. And they didn't realize they can actually take advantage of the vehicle. So I think increasing ridership by adding more marketing efforts, not only locally to Eugene. But also within the multifamily sectors can help that metric and show more success by having a higher ratio of usability from customers than what we currently have.
Alright, thank you. Juan, I'm, I'm going to vote to approve this, but I do want to say that I, in the future, I would like to see something that could tell me whether or not. This was a wise expenditure of this amount of money. I think Anna has comments you want to.
Yeah, I guess, uh, thank you for the question, Commissioner Brown. Couple of things that I do want to call out is a reminder that these programs are all funded using clean fuel credits. So these are not rate payer dollars that are, are going to fund these programs. I would also call out the, the ramp rates that, that Juan touched on. This was a pilot program for the first two years, so. Uh, some of the intelligence that came out of that was one that, no surprise, location is everything. So we did see. Uh, much better results in multifamily housing, which is, you know, definitely a unique benefit to the community. And also uh, that participation rates did ramp up. Um, as with EV adoption in general. Uh, folks tend to be a little bit slow starter. Um, but uh, we did see uh, participation ramp up. So as with any pilot program, we look to the success of those participation rates and how it impacts those, those communities. Uh, but again, so I would point to funding. Um, we are looking at those metrics and, and how well utilized that, those are. I would also point out that the contract gives us a lot of latitude. Um, at any point to, to ensure that if, if the programs are not meeting. Um, our needs as a community, uh, or it's not the highest best allocation of those clean fuel credits, then we do have out clauses in that contract.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anna and General Manager. You have comments?
I was just gonna um, add a little bit, Anna touched on the fact that when, as an aggregator of these clean fuel credits, there are guidelines around. How uh, we're really suggested to use them. Um, what I'm hearing from you, Commissioner Brown, and I think this is a reasonable request, is that. Um, as we start to look at the clean fuel credits um, in aggregate and holistically. Uh, we need to be more specific and as to the intent and the outcomes that we're looking for. I think that's a fair request. Um, because at some point it is also that the, the transportation sector has changed significantly in the, in the last few years. Um, we also recognize that electrification and in fact, it would be a legitimate use of those. Uh, clean fuel credits to look at the infrastructure that we have that's necessary to support that increase in, in load. And so uh, we'll continue to look at this uh, along, you know, your, your and other board members' suggestion to be more specific in the intent that we have.
And there's a question from Sonia.
Yeah, um, the, so the create, clean fuels credits. Um, what were some examples of other uses that we, or is it that this portion of them can only really be used for transportation type?
There's these guidelines around, because those come from the transportation sector. Um, those who are aggregators should be using those to support uh, the electrification of transportation. Those also fund our charger rebates, for example. Um, but um. There is, there is no restriction that would say that we couldn't use those if we wanted to deal with infrastructure to support. Further electrification of transportation. So that may be other kinds of infrastructure and we'll, we'll need to take a look at what. Because we do know that it is going to increase load.
Okay, so then how many, uh, how many of those credits do we have and? How predictable are they into the future? I mean, do we get them every year? Do we already have a bucket of them that's good for three years?
Well, we have, um, I believe those are, are, uh, we, I believe that we get those annually. Is that correct? Uh, Anna, those, those are legislatively driven, uh, so they, they could. Go away, uh, but uh, Anna has some clarification around.
Yeah. A, a couple of things about that. So they're allocated based on a number of factors, including, you know, uh, charging infrastructure, but also primarily. The number of electric vehicles that are registered, that are registered in our service territory. So it sort of leads to. The, the, the better job that we do on encouraging EV adoption, the more clean fuels credits that were allocated. As to the value of those clean fuels credits, they are a commodity like any other. Um, they're sold on wholesale markets, so it's contingent. Based on demand. So we have seen um, prices fluctuate as we do with all of the commodities with which EWEB uh, manages. So as to the overall value, market based, but we have seen a significant uptick, obviously, in the amount of clean fuels credits that we do receive. Uh, because of EV, EV adoption throughout our community. Did I get the whole question? I thought there was another piece, uh, Commissioner Carlson.
Yeah, how much um, are, is this the entirety of our budget for this year? It's just a portion of it?
Uh, so as a, as an apartment, we aim to expend at least 80% of uh, of, of the overall proceeds from, from the year prior. We do have a bit of a bank, um, as you know, Juan has been very active in his position the last couple of years. Uh, we work with our friends in finance to make sure that we are allocating those dollars as they're, um, as the clean fuel credits are liquidated. To ensure that they're going to, as Frank pointed out, an appropriate uh, use, which is tied to uh, uh, accelerating EV adoption. I don't know, I don't recall the bank off the top of my head. Um, Juan may have that information.
Yeah, some of the projections are about $2 billion in the few coming years, um, coming from clean fuel credits. Uh, and so it's a substantial amount of money and anything that we don't spend can be leveraged for other programs in future years. Uh, but anything that is defensible in transportational application and as Frank mentioned, including. For the infrastructure piece is something that EWEB can leverage. We tried to split these credits and the funding. Across social equity, increase in adoption, uh, community uh, grants, for example, as well. And different projects that we have with the city Eugene, where they made requests and financial assistance for infrastructure that they're looking at doing. So we've tried to expand that across all kinds of sectors uh, that involve transportational electrification. And now we're starting to look at how do we help um, sell these infrastructure upgrades and how can we leverage this funding, a percentage perhaps? Of the funding to support that and not put the burden on the customers, but also give, give EWEB a chance to be ready to. As these increases in adoption take place.
Thank you.
Juan really wanted to talk about all three.
Um, do you want to talk about the other two?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do all three.
Number eight, uh, the, another half billion dollars designed for this part of them. There's no buildings, there's no asphalt. And this is to design a, so there's no drainage. And now we're at a million dollars and to design, what's a project cost?
Is that a question for Scott or Aaron?
Yeah, yeah, waiting to see if anybody else is answering. Uh, so uh, we have John Marshall and Scott Milovich both. Available to answer questions. So what I understood, the full build out of all the phases was 40 million. We have not put all of that into the um, CIP to this point. We put the first few phases into the CIP. Uh, and you can see that's like 5 million a year, I believe. John is nodding his head. Yes. That's, that's what we're looking at right now.
So it's, we're, we're spending a million dollars to design, 5 million dollar project.
This is just for design on phase two?
Phase two, right. The first of the architects, this is Mizetti, which is like a mallizer, their former company. I'm just wondering how much money we're spending if we're spending. Um, a million dollars to design up by, I mean, there's fencing and there's lighting, but there's no asphalt to filter age. And I'm just thinking about the cost of, of that. So that is just to kind of get me in context of a million dollar design.
John, do you want to?
Sure. Yeah, so um, we're doing phase one through three, construction cost total are estimated at around 12. Million dollars, 4 million dollars approximately each phase is what we were targeting, uh. Trying to hit a, a goal with our, our capital budget of that 4 million dollars per, per year. So that's the first three phases of construction costs, about 12 million dollars total. You guys are comfortable with, if we get no other bids, if this would have been 650,000, would we have approved it? I mean, what's the benchmark that when, when there's nobody else bidding and we've got this one number? How do we know the part we're appearing to do?
Scott is pinging me. I'm going to call on Scott and let him answer your question because we, we did get that from you. Uh, and I do know that these are the same firms that did phase one, just Mizetti is, as the civil engineer is now in the lead. Um, and that uh, it did, it was in line with our estimates. Scott, do you want to chime in?
So yes, thanks Karen. Um, Commissioner, this is uh, Scott Milovich. I'm the Support Services Operations Manager. And um, so this, this contract for Mizetti is for. Um, for design of uh, and engineering of phase two and three. Um, in your statement, you said that. Um, there's no asphalt, um, there's just fencing and that, the, um, there is asphalt, there's curb and gutter, there is drainage. Uh, there's significant grading, um, uh, fair amount of curb work. Um, it, it's, it's a, it's a significant project just in terms of, of site work. Um, responding to the, the question um, that was put to us first was around the, uh, you are correct, there is no. Um, uh, building or structure in this, um, in these current phases. Those are later on for covered storage and then some um, um, heated space for back trucks. So tho- those are, those are far out and as Karen said, you know, what we budgeted for in the CIP is all of the, all of the lay down space and storage. As well as the security fencing and lighting.
Thank you.
And the, the design part for that um, will get us past um, the next two phases, which are that part of the work.
Alright, thank you. I'm, I'm going to support. I just hear you clarify it.
And Frank?
Yeah, President McCray, and I think this is really a statement for all of us in, in management as well as staff. Is that it's a fair question when you only get one proposal or one bid. That Commissioner Brown is asking, and that is how do we know that it's a fair price? Or in this case, I think what we looked at was the rate of which they were charging. Um, for their time. And so we have to have some benchmark that we can reference, I think, going forward. Um, this is under this particular consent calendar B because it only had. Um, one bid and I think it's a fair question that going forward. Uh, we should be a little bit more clear on relative to that kind of situation. How do we know that this is a reasonable response? I think that's, that's a fair thing for us to, to improve on.
Last little rant is on Wildish. We just approved that habitat contract a couple of months ago. Now we're asking for another $200,000 and it's hard for me to comprehend that they changed the specs in 60 days. If we didn't know about this when we approved it, the 900,000 to our contract, but that's my one first comment. That why didn't we know about this when we had this contract two months ago? Because building size has almost decreased and then. All our wood was dead that we cut two years ago, but um, I, I loved your response. You've already spent this money, correct? That this project is going to be done in the next two weeks.
Yeah, good evening, Commissioner. Um, yeah, thank you. Hello, good evening. Uh, so uh, just to clarify, um, Commissioner Brown, the change in spec did not come from Wildish, that came from FERC dam safety. We were under a bit of a crunch to get this all uh, designed and approved. From FERC dam safety in order to be able to construct this year, which is very important to us to meet our compliance deadline uh, with, under our FERC license. Uh, dam safety, uh, a plug for them. They worked very quickly to review this project. They did have concern over the abrasion specification that was originally identified. So that, that took us all by surprise. It's not something that we would have expected Wildish um, or EWEB staff to, to uncover prior. So. Um, so just a note on that, uh, we have spent about half the money. This is a three month long project mobilization in May. Uh, the work in Smith reservoir in uh, June and then what we have remaining this month is. Pretty much all the work in Trail Bridge Reservoir plus QA QC of um, the work in Smith. So we're about half spent. We haven't already spent it. Um, and, and just a note, we, we came. To you, um, just under the required board threshold of 25%. And because we are under a time crunch again for this and should, we don't anticipate changes. But again, this is a really important and critical project for us to get completed this year prior to the Chinook Salmon run. So uh, we wanted to cover our bases uh, so that we had, we were able to complete um, over the next six weeks. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I just procedurally, I, I mean, to me it's challenging when you come to us for a budget amendment request. You've already spent over half the money that you're asking for. Um, I, I don't know how that works. In protocols, but it's just something that. Yeah, I guess it is what it is. I understand your time constraints, the fact that we only meet once a month, but. I know that we went through this a long time ago and, and I didn't know if even, should even do that, but. I'm not going to flavor it. I'm going to pass it, but just so. Watching, you know, now I'm tired of you bro, so I'm done with my questions. Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Just, just one, one more point there, Commissioner. I think that if I recall correctly, the change in spec came. Mid to late May, so, and we did need Wildish and others to be able to mobilize um, in May in order to be able to start work in June. So when we came with the original contract, we did not have information that the change in spec was forthcoming.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, uh, my comments, we're back on the, uh, the other one and the Mizetti contract. Did I hear you say this project is 40 million dollars? All six phases. And we, we have not, like I said, we did not budget for the later phases because we want to get this first piece done and see if it meets our needs. Then decide going forward if we still need the additional phases. That's why, why we didn't want to do it all at once because we don't know that we need that. Here, here, I'm, I'm throwing myself under the bus potentially. I. Did any of the other commissioner, did you know, did you have this on your radar? Because I, this was like, where did this even come from? I.
I knew that we were doing improvements to that lot. I don't know that we talked about the, all the phases that you just referenced.
You know, I, I knew that there was um, like a vague inclination that something was going on, but I feel like for a 40 million dollar project, if we start down that. I want to know upfront before I commit to phase one, two and three. I, I just personally would like to know before I'm up there on the board, like we have a presentation, we're going to vote on this. It's 40 million dollars potentially.
It's forty million dollars potentially, here's the plan for it, instead of it being on a contract that I don't feel like we've discussed. I, maybe that's just me, I just wanted to check in with other commissioners, but that's how I felt when I read this and just heard that number.
So you're looking for motion?
Yeah.
Like to move to adopt consent calendar B, items five, eight and eleven. By Brown. Second by Schlossberg. All in support, say aye.
Aye.
Ask unanimously. All right, on to our next agenda item, which is the integrated capital and financial plans.
Is this? Is this on now? So President.
Is it just for those who are listening mentally, or does it amplify the?
Just turn it on and.
Now we have green light.
Now it'll.
Yes.
Magic.
President McCray, Commissioners, good evening. Joining me, Frank Lawson, General Manager, for the record, joining me this evening are Karen Kelly, Chief Operating Officer, and Deborah Hart, Student General Manager and CFO. Want to walk you through a little bit of a journey this evening relative to our capital plan and our long term financial plan. And just to kind of give you a little bit of a preview of what this, what this looks like, we're going to go through a number of different sections here. We'll pause at various points to gather feedback from Commissioners on some of the various guidance documents, guidance comments, assumptions that we've made, again, relative to the view that we're trying to, to look at here. Just from a, an overall perspective, I think it's really important to recognize that we deal with typically a combination of very short responsive timeframes, as well as, as long timeframe. So when we think about the, the long term financial plan, we're really looking out over the life of many of these assets, at least ten, in some cases twenty years. And we want to be able to understand and the impacts for you going into the following year, which is the, the period of time that, that you're looking at relative to the approval of an annual budget. So just a couple of the highlights and we'll go, we'll cover these throughout this presentation in, in various forms. We are looking at some really challenging financial pressures. A number of those are not unique to EWEB. When you hear about Pacificor raising rates at eighteen percent or twenty percent year after year. More recently, some of the other utilities, Clark in Vancouver, fourteen percent, just in a very instantaneous way, this, this last January. And you look at PG and E seventeen, eighteen percent. So it's, it's not unique to EWEB, although we also want to look at this and say, what are we doing to manage that? And we are looking at, at some, some key drivers that impact our rate projection going forward. On the water side, and just, just a little bit of indication on this, this particular slide. Blue is water naturally, green is electricity and black applies to both utilities. On the, the capital, much of this is driven by capital. We employ about a billion and a half dollars worth of capital equipment to deliver our products and services. Drinking water and electricity and information and support. On the water side, we're looking at some pretty significant, once in a generation type of capital investments. Investments that are fifty plus years in their lifetime. Second Source, which is a resiliency project on the Willamette River and Base Level Storage, College Hill, East Fortieth, and some others that we use to deliver water throughout the service territory. On the electric side, you have to look a little bit at our history to understand the pressures that we're going to face on the capital front over the next ten years. In particular, ten to fifteen years. Eugene was one of the fastest growing cities in the United States in the sixties and seventies. And in response to that, also during a time of sort of the first phase of electrification in the sixties and seventies, our electric system was built out very quickly and very dramatically. If you think about the age and the simultaneous aging of that equipment, that is all coming to its end of life within the next ten to fifteen years. And that level of ballooning of simultaneous, simultaneous infrastructure aging is reflected in the electric system capital plan. Just as one specific note, we did include the board's decision to pre-fund the Lieberg decommissioning, also as part of our financial assumptions. As well as capital drivers, which is really a significant part of what we do. We're also looking at some external conditions, labor markets, certain workforce challenges. Non-labor expenses, we're seeing higher than your typical CPI in our sectors. Some of that as we deal with materials that have a heavy raw material content, a lot of transportation issues. And so we're seeing some, some pressures there as well as some of the others. We are seeing rate impacts from this as well as from, in particular on the electric side, from some of the positions that we're facing in our financial, in the financial side, from a combination of weather, storm response and other conditions this year and the fact that we're dipping into our power reserve, which is really designed for that. But then we need to refund that, that reserve as, as part of our condition. For a little bit of context, this is part of a process that we, that we go through and provide different touchpoints for Commissioners. Along the way, we look at capital plans, we look at financial assumptions. Those are driven oftentimes by our master plans, our, our asset plans, integrated resource plans. There's other, there's lots of plans in, in what we look at going forward. We work with the board around different guidance and assumptions. You know, there's, there's various aspects in yellow here, which is where the board interacts with management and subject matter experts. That ultimately ends up in a redesign and ultimately ends up in our customer, customer rates. And so this is a continuous, really a continuous effort. By the time we get into one budget, we're already planning and working around for the next budget. This is where we are, we'll talk a little bit more and gets, get your guidance around the assumptions. We'll get some guidance around capital improvement plans, where there potentially are dials to turn. I think that's part of Commissioner Carlson's question around the property, the Bertleson property, is that that's specifically designed to be able to turn the dial based on the need that we see as well as the financial conditions and constraints that we have going forward. And so this is, this is where we are and more to come, we'll be back throughout the course of the next several months, along with several rate hearings late in the year, ultimately leading toward the proposal and plan and hopefully approval, actually necessary approval of the board for the twenty twenty five budget. The, some of the, the impacts that affect the utility, our finances, are around some of the assumptions that we'd like to get some of your initial feedback on. These are representative of our, where we see our investment priorities, where we see some of the assumptions that we make. The electric and water investments, Karen Kelly will go through the capital plans here shortly. And then the actual in, impacts of those capital investments, as well as some of these assumptions will be reported by Deborah Hart as to what those are yielding from a rates and dollars and projections and financial metrics perspectives relative to our compliance with board policy and, and rates, rate guidelines going forward. We'll note a couple of things relative to these investments, I won't go through all of those, I think you're, you're aware of those. But also, one of the things that's mentioned here is customer care is designed specifically around moving the part of our population that we call utility burden, is pretty similar to energy burden. But we also include water, moving those, that percentage of customers from the burdened category to outside of the burdened category. So when we look at rates, for example, relative to median incomes and what percentage of our population falls within that burdened category, that can have an impact on how much we allocate to the customer care program. And that's built into the calculations that our financial team and our customer team works through. Doesn't specifically design how those are distributed, but it identifies the amount of funding that that would, that would need. We also looking at benchmarking relative to general inflation, which sector that we're in, we like to, over the course of a number of years, look at something that is, is consistent within the industry benchmarks. That tends to be in the sometimes two to four percent range. Over the course of the, of the plan, which is ten year compounded, ends up in the twenty two to forty eight percent range. And that's specific to just sort of basic infrastructure replacement. That would be what would be outside of that, some of the lumps in the oatmeal would include things like a second source and some of the other things that are identified as, as type three projects, which are, which are large strategic projects. If you look at one of the impacts with both water and electric, and this is something that we've, we've been working with Commissioners on for, for a number of years, specifically the last few years. We do make assumptions around what we see as general inflation versus what we see in our, our own sector with our own equipment. And you can see on the electric side on the left there, that we were tracking fairly close to our assumptions up until the last couple of years. Some of that driven through supply chain and other inflationary pressures, where we saw a definite deviation to our revenue requirement on one side, which was where the, the money was coming in and what rate of which we were assuming and spending on the other side. That has created some need to recover and get back to something that is typical within our industry from a replacement cost perspective. On the water side, I'll see more of a steady income. There was a significant amount of, of rate control over the last few years. But we also are looking on that side, the pressure coming from the, the fact that we have some once in the generation type of, type of projects. So some of the specific feedback before we get into the exact capital plans and the outcomes is, are there any particular guidance pieces that the board would like to amend or discuss? Anything from assumptions around external conditions to any other guideposts that you believe should be considered? As we start to get into looking at more specifically of what Karen goes through and, and the outcome that, that that results in from, from Deborah's opportunity to provide or ask any questions around some of the assumptions that we've made.
Any questions on this part, Brown?
So on the budgeting, so I go back to the old twenty years ago when Ron Farmer gave us all a lecture on, you know, spending money that we don't have by eighty five percent water, but we put to ninety. So this year we're at eighty, correct?
This is the, I'm going to look at Brian just for a minute, we, we may, we do make it so, just to be clear, Commissioner Brown, we do make conservative assumptions around the amount of availability of water for generation. And that is captured in what we, what we call the contribution margin risk factor. And that can represent a number of different things, it can represent a ninety percent water, which would be one example. It can represent a significantly lower amount of, of consumption, let's say because of weather. So it can be, or we can also, it, it's represented if we have soft, soft market prices when we have surplus wholesale opportunities. So it, it represents a combination of all three of those things, but it is roughly ninety percent water if you just looked at the water, the availability of water for regeneration. So, and this year we are at roughly.
Oh, it's pretty miserable, I bet John knows though. It's like eighty five percent the region globally, just above a hundred percent.
So I'm just concerned about budgeting or projecting projects that, spending money that we haven't made yet, we're budgeting on the, on something that's not there, because that was a big fight with this group years ago when we went from eighty five to ninety. And now that we're, we're experiencing low water levels and low generation levels. Is that the assumption that we're going to stick with when we bring in all these projects?
I, I think that there's a couple of ways to answer that. So I think what you're really trying to get to is that how do we build in conservatism? And I'll, I'll say other ways of dealing with volatility in our budgeting process. And so I think our assumption is to continue with the contribution margin risk factor at roughly those levels. But there's also, I think, and Deborah will go through this later in the presentation, various other ways of which we're, we're being, I'll say prudent and conservative in our, in our approach. The other way to look at that is that's why you have a power reserve, which we, which we do have specifically to deal with some of that volatility. So there's a number of tools, there's not just one tool to do that, but Deborah, you want to elaborate on that?
And that, and that was the tool that I was going to talk about. And we are going to talk a little bit later about where that conservatism is also layered in. And the power reserve is primarily where we would address this sort of volatility and built into the ten year plan that I'll share tonight, there are several increases along the way, acknowledging that power markets are becoming increasingly volatile and we need to reserve against that.
Can I just clarify, just make sure I've read it or remember it, fifteen percent electric and nine percent water for next year, is that what?
Ultimately, yes, that ultimately, now there's a number of drivers, the, the nine percent is, is fairly close to what we've looked at on the water side. And the water and the electric utilities are in much different positions relative to their, their comparators, as well as what's driving those two. Part of the fifteen percent is the fact that we have to replenish the power reserve because of some of the conditions we faced recently. So that is actually a piece, but the, the budget, the budgetary outcome that you observed was, yes, next year specifically, fifteen percent, nine percent.
Last, the three million dollars cuts that we have to find in the next nine months, do you have any idea where they're coming from?
We have some ideas, yeah.
But nothing you can share with us?
We're, we're working through that.
Okay, I just.
Some of it is how.
I'm in concurrence with what, what you've done up there, it's just that I'm concerned that it's, we're putting a lot of pressure on a lot of people, but we're going to raise the utility, raise fifteen percent next year. And I want to keep that in mind in the context with others when other people are trying to add to the EWEB bill. The EWEB bill is going to get pretty big. If we have other things added to it, it's getting bigger, so I'm just doing a little, little campaign here, so, thank you.
Is that supplemental?
Okay.
I, I think also, Commissioner Brown, when, when we look at, we, we've looked at a number of different ways of how we handle the financial pressures that, that we're looking at. Many of those driven by the fact that we do have a heavy capital investment that, that we need to do. And the longer we wait, the more expensive it gets. And so there, there is that in combination with doing it sooner also facilitates the recovery of those metrics, which is necessary to go out to. To go out to the bond market in 2026 to facilitate this. So there's a number of different drivers that sort of optimize around doing that sooner rather than later, unfortunately. Anything for you, Borowski?
Thank you. No, I think I'm just, well, a couple of things. I am concerned, obviously, a 15%. Bite is a tough one on the electric side. I understand why we need to get there. We had a, we had a tough year. I know in the future we're going to try and smooth that out as much as we can. One question that I had kind of goes to something that Commissioner Brown said. When we're talking about energy or utility burdened. Do, you know, I looked at the chart earlier and we're doing pretty good on as far as that goes. However, you said that we relook at the number of people that are utility burdened. And we adjust our incentives accordingly. Does that include this? When somebody says their utility burden, does that include the stormwater fees that are imposed by the the city of Eugene? And if so, or if not, either way. Is that something that we should maybe be discussing with the the city? Since we're helping them, we're helping out these people who are energy or utility burdened. And that is basically part of their utilities. And for me, that's one of the bigger parts of the bill. So. Maybe we can talk to them when we have our intergovernmental meeting and say. We're we're throwing a bunch of money towards this to help these individuals and this community. But your part of the bill is adding to that burden. And is there something that they could do? Just a food for thought.
Commissioner Borowski, I think it's a worthwhile discussion. I will say that when we look at. What we call utility burden, it's a comparison of the electricity and the water charges. On a on a typical basis versus median household income, which gives us. An initial starting point, but then we look at what percentage of the population that we're serving. Actually has an income substantially below that at a threshold. And we compare that with the the average or typical bill. And that's how we come up with utility burden. It does not include the stormwater fee or the wastewater component. And so we're we're doing it specifically to cover. The electric and the the water portion. And then we we use that as the basis to determine. The the funding level, not the exact distribution. Methodology, and that's something that that we we handle separately.
Thank you.
I really appreciated the inflation illustration. So it just shows how much, you know, we. Plan for versus the trajectory that's upward trending. That's that's really scary. Are there are there forecasts of that that go beyond the? 23 that we are using and how are we using that data? Well, one, how does that data actually compare to what happened? So how reliable is it? And how much are we adjusting our own forecasts to better match that?
Yep, I can think of that. So those are, those are the CPI numbers that electricity and water services experienced over the time period that was. Chartered there. We we have. Kept our assumptions elevated for another year on O and M and two more years. On capital costs to reflect what we think is going to be an ongoing trend for some of those utility costs to continue to go up. And I know you've heard me say this before. The Fed continues to use monetary policy to try and drive down those rates of inflation. But we are using assumptions that are higher than their goal of 2%. And I'll share that a little bit later this evening.
I fear with their, they're much smarter smarter people than I am, but it just seems like a lot of the challenge that we're facing is that there's fewer, fewer suppliers of the products that we need. And constraining capital. Limits competition. So it's just, I fear that that number is going to keep rising. That's. And aside, so I appreciate that you are continuing to elevate that number to make sure that we are. Trying to match it as best we can with the crystal ball that I know nobody actually has, so.
Frank?
Yeah, Commissioner Carlson, it it really is a good observation that you're making around the the dynamics around assumptions. Versus reality as we go forward. One of the big benefits of having a long term financial plan is to do exactly what you're talking about. And that's to forecast forward and look for areas that we need to keep an eye on. The the tricky part about, we could just say, well, let's let's go with a higher assumption. What that can result in is an over collection of our customers' money on our part versus what what we're doing. So we, I think, looking at this on an annual basis as we roll forward over a five, 10, 15 year view. Really does give us the 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 visual ability to look and and adjust going forward. The the reality of it is if we look at financial management, we look at proper reserves. We look at this process that we can manage that as we go forward, but it is. It is a concern. You know, you see numbers and you look at trends and you go, well, you know, what if? And so I I think it's a fair assumption, and it also is something that I think we need to to be constantly looking at relative. I know we've talked about reserves and highest and best use of cash and when you when you use those and when you replenish them, you know, creating buffers. Which part of our capital plan can you adjust the dials on the take and look at risk versus? The financial constraints that you have. And that I I think that's the purpose of these kinds of conversations. And it's great feedback to get from you that that when we look at potential areas of risk, having higher. More constrained supply chains and what that means for us is something that we need to continue to consider.
I guess so. I've been sitting on this for the last little bit since we had the conversation about the the consent calendar. And I was going to wait until the end. I think it it makes sense here while we're talking about the capital planning because it's a large figure. You know, I. I have so much faith and so much trust in all of you. You are such brilliant people and throughout the years you've given me nothing but that. So maybe I'm a little bit spoiled. So just tonight, hearing that that dollar figure just threw me off a bit. So I do appreciate the approach of having the the phased in approach so that if we want to not move forward, we can. But it also makes me wonder if we've just as a board become a little bit more. Placent about. Large dollar figures like that $40 million, such a big number and that that drastically impacts the rates that we're getting in here. I guess it doesn't right now because it's not a part of this. So that that is like even another ding against it, but. I I just want to make sure that we are fully scrutinizing projects like this because I still. Don't fully understand what we're doing in the Bertelson project and that that scares me. We just voted, you know, essentially to continue with potentially $40 million project. Again, because I have a lot of faith and trust in all that you've done, I just, this project seems like a deviation. So I'm I'm still struggling with that. I'll let others.
Well, I'll provide some psychological assistance for you here. So first of all, you haven't heard the $40 million. That that has not been something that that I believe that we've talked to the board specifically about. The Bertelson property and developing that has been an opportunistic kind of look at for us. So. I I think when we look at that, it's not in the capital plan, which is, by the way, a billion dollars if you if you add it up. And the fact that it is phased is to do just that, is to say, okay, does when and where and why would it would it make sense? I'm not sure I would even call it a $40 million project at this point. I think, you know, if you look at where we are in the phases. It's it's not anywhere anywhere near that, but you haven't hurt the 40 million dollars at this point. And and I don't think that we're asking you to say, yeah, we're we're going ahead with the $40 million. It is an opportunistic thing that. Project that that we've looked at. And Rod, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that approach that that we're looking at.
Yeah, I'll just add one thing real quick. So when we went to do the permitting and everything for the the property. They waived the permits and the planning and all the stuff goes out, they asked for the full build out. So. We provided a full build out, you know, over 20, probably 30 year period or something like that. So that it was designed out. So the six phases are are, I'm not going to call them mythical. But they are, they're they're able to to adapt and dial in, but we had to go ahead and project out what we thought might be after next about a year. So the 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 portions we are doing now are just what we need to expand the yard and and get the. The uses that we have now next couple of years, five years.
And what do we get for that? I mean, do we get increased resiliency because we can store? Or to deal with, you know, increasing storms? Is that part of what we're looking at doing with this? Or or is there another benefit there that I?
Short term. Benefits are are being able to expand in the use of our warehouse or yard layout or overflowing with stuff, you know, as as we buy and build. And people, customers, right? We need more stuff. So it's congestion, that kind of thing. The ability to stage for construction. It's we're spread out in different places around town. So. So that's the immediate effect, but the the full build out would include things, other buildings, shops, those kind of things. Like I can't remember the. I think the same thing is we have some of those projects. If we can give a correspondence, I think.
Yeah, can we just formally ask for that, a correspondence of just what you suggested? It's just some sketches of kind of where we think in the overall timeframe. Karen? And then I know Mindy had, before we carry on with the presentation, I'm not sure if you're answering a question, Karen, or if you're going to the next part of the presentation.
I did just want to add that in your Q and A, there is a rolling sheet of the different phases. So it does give you an idea that we have provided some correspondence to the board in the past about the progress and we'd be happy to continue that.
I just have a quick question that about the. The. BPA rate increases that we passed through, and I know that they're anticipated. And my question is. How far in advance do we know when these are coming? Like, is it is it possible that? First of all, that it's greater than we anticipate and also that they come more frequently than we expect?
So historically, Bonneville has done a a rate case. Through their processes every two years, and that's been their historic pattern. There's nothing in their statute that says that it has to be two years or three years or four years. That's that's been been practiced. This this was. Not typical of recent history where they said, we're going to do a three year. And it's going to be of this level, which was which was higher than than we had built into our assumptions. Now, there's a couple of parts of that process that go through some vetting with with customers. So, you know, while they're saying 13, it. Might end up at 12 or they they go through a process similar to what we do. What we have and need to include in our in our sort of forecasting is the fact that. Oftentimes going into a contract negotiation period, they tend to suppress and be very conservative with their view of rates. And then post contract, they tend to be a little bit different than that. Just leave it at that. And so we need to make those assumptions and understand the impacts of those assumptions. So. Again, those are areas where I think when you look at power reserve and you look at some of these other operating reserves that we can make. Assumptions around, but we also have to recognize that there's a little bit of volatility in that. And I think when you'll actually get another presentation here later. In this meeting that talks about the different kind of product options from Bonneville and there are. When you think about risk, you know, there's different degrees of support or sort of volume of the product. That Bonneville can provide, and that would be something to consider when you're listening to to Megan and Brian and others talk about the Bonneville options.
I just want to say, nobody wants a 15% increase in electricity rates and also looking at the inflation compared to our increase in rates. I feel like we're doing all we can to, you know. Control our increase in rates, and I appreciate the effort here to do that. Yeah, I guess I mean, I guess that's it. I feel like we're we're doing our darkest to keep this under control and. And I appreciate appreciate that effort. I guess the last thing I would add is that. I think it's going to just be increasingly important for us all to keep a track of those who are utility burdened. I know that's on our radar. That's why we talked about it. And to my, from my perspective, as long as we're keeping an eye on that and making sure that we're doing all we can to. Avoid pushing those lower income households into into a bad spot. I feel like then we're doing all we can.
President McCray, the one, the one comment that I would I would make about that observation is that. We do recognize there's some pretty challenging external drivers. We also recognize that that we have some. Some of our own drivers around capital and and other things that that we're planning around. We also want to make sure that we're actively managing this. That we're that we're not just going through the motions and saying, oh, this, you know, we have to do, we're, we want to actively manage our financial situation. We also don't want to put the organization in a in a bad position a few years from now. So we we need to be. Active and sometimes that means doing things sooner rather than later, which can be a little bit uncomfortable now. But we also appreciate some of the decisions that the board has made around pre-funding of Lieberg, for example, and now that. I think shows really prudent financial considerations from the board. So appreciate your comments. But we're also not just going to rest on our laurels. We're going to, we're going to look in and evaluate our situation as we go forward. Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, I think it's on now. All right. Okay, so we're going to talk about the capital plan. I think that the right side of this is that there's really nothing new in this plan. This plan. About really three years ago, we brought this before the board. Same plan, few updates just to give you. So just as a reminder, to continue safely carrying out our strategic plan, we do need to continue investing in our systems through the capital improvement planning process. This year's 10 year plan continues the progress on the projects we did put forth over the last three years and meets our strategic plan goals of completing all the compulsory work. Things we must do while maintaining reliability from source to tap and source to switch and targeting increases in our resiliency. So to start out with water. Just a note here, the planned components again are the same. We continue to invest in the system and ramp towards the second source construction beginning in 2026. Reminder here, our type one work is generally less than a million and can be completed in about a year. You can see here on the slide. This is our compulsory service and pipeline work, emergent and planned minor facility work and some work through our IS and our fleet. Type two is discrete, typically over a million dollars and also takes multiple years to complete. In type two, we have our base level reservoirs, transmission upgrades that are part of our resilient spine. EES and our Bertelson project that we were just discussing. Type three is our large strategic multi-year projects and that for water is our Willamette treatment plan. So in water, this current tenure plan, when compared to the last tenure plan, we are up about seventeen million. Uh, that is about four point six percent overall, and as Frank and Rod mentioned last month, the water utility is experiencing. Higher rate pressure due to once in a generation projects like our base level reservoir work and our second source. They're stacking up early in the plan as well as increasing construction costs primarily from higher inflation rates and materials and labor. So the plan has been adjusted to the current construction climate in the first couple of years. Uh, a few highlights here, as we've discussed for the last three years, um. And as we complete our major capital projects at Hayden Bridge, we have moved out into our main replacements, trying to increase those. To keep pace with national benchmarks on pipeline renewal and replacement. And other key performance indicators around frequency and duration of main breaks, so this is really resiliency work here. Our base level reservoir work goes down because of slow ramp up on College Hill and the completion of construction at the East Fortieth Reservoir Site. Uh, we do, though, I want to make note, continue to work in the upper level reservoir storage while um we are focusing on these base level. Storage as well, so in the in the upper pressure zones, there is additional storage projects happening. Um, as transmission projects have progressed in planning, costs have also gone up and estimates have been revised, so you can see a slight increase there. Then we did discuss Bertelson, uh we are investing in developing this property in phases to expand our equipment and material storage. And construct secondary access to the Roosevelt Operations Center while trying to keep costs smoothed out in the first few years of the plan. The increase here reflects progression into phases two and three of design and construction, and I would just add that um. Along with what we discussed earlier, Bertelson also provides more uh secure storage for us. We do. Store equipment around the city in some of our fenced in locations, but we have a higher uh rate of theft. And um incidents with that, so we do believe this would help with those. And then with our second source project, um it has gone down slightly as initial design and permitting work progresses leading into construction. And one thing that you don't see on this slide this year as compared with prior years is AMI. Our costs have um been going down because we do anticipate project completion or deployment in twenty twenty five. Moving on to electric. Again, looking at this ten year plan, the components are essentially the same, and we continue to invest in the system and make progress on our Carmen Smith relicensing. For type one, we're focusing on ramping up asset replacement and moving from a reactive to a proactive replacement along with stabilizing equipment and resources. And including communications equipment, fiber, downtown network, fleet, information services, equipment, and much, much more. And one of the things I wanted to mention about um becoming less reactive and more proactive, I was in the field this morning with the subsection. Substation crews and uh they were talking about uh a time when they they took out a seventy year old transformer. And they ended up keeping it, we still have it apparently, um as a spare, but the joke was, it's not really a spare, it's a prayer. And I think that what we're really trying to do here is is make sure that we maintain and improve our reliability by planning ahead. And not being reactive, having, you know, major shutdowns, but trying to to make our system more resilient and able to heal more quickly. When we do have interruptions. For type two, we're focused on enhancing resiliency for our highest impact loads, risk-based rebuilds and renewals that um include the substation rebuilds and reconfiguration. That we have um kind of coined as uh ten substations in ten years, it's still a goal. We're also managing emerging risks to the system such as dam safety, wildfire, low growth with electrification and other transmission and distribution needs. Earthquake, et cetera, plus strategic initiatives such as EWEB Enterprise Solution, EES, and our AMI upriver deployment. Our type three uh includes the relicensing work for Carmen Smith, uh both with the plant and with risk mitigation efforts, and you heard a lot about that last month. So I did want to just cover some of the changes, the the main drivers on the electric plan. You can see overall, this ten year plan is up twenty one million or three point three percent. Um, don't try to make those numbers quite uh equate like they do on the water side. There are more lines to incorporate on the electric side than we have room for on this slide, plus I'm only showing the ones that had some major drivers. As Rod discussed last month, the electric utility continues to face challenges with rising costs from inflation, long lead times for materials and equipment. Labor shortages, specialized fields, and both new and revised compliance requirements. So for electric infrastructure, this is up due to updated project estimates, construction and materials inflation. Essentially, though, it's the same targeted work as in past years, it's just become more expensive. Fleet uh is shown this year, this is is new as a driver, it's about timing of replacements um for vehicles. The current impacts of vehicle shortage uh and long lead times have moved costs to build up in this ten year plan. So for example, purchases from twenty twenty one, we haven't actually received yet, and then those uh new vehicles need to be outfitted. Costs go up, can see where I'm going here. Uh, Gary uh. Gary Lynch, our fleet supervisor, reports he's even seen as high as forty percent increases in um costs for vehicles. For IS, we're actually down here showing a drop in the plan from completion of season one and updated information on the remaining project work for seasons two and three. For buildings and land is increased due to more defined project scope and phasing. Again, this is uh primarily the Bertelson project. And the first three phases of the material storage is shown here for to make this a useful lay down equipment and material storage and then. Then we'll evaluate the needs going forward, as we mentioned. So again, um having spares and not prayers, that's another purpose for this and what we're hoping for. So a couple of things that you will know are not shown again on this slide, again, AMI, it is not exactly a major driver any longer. Our investment has slowed down, um but it's still of high interest. Our investments uh have gone down to level out this year with the completion of in-town deployment. And we just reached a benchmark of ninety eight percent deployed. Reasons for a similar spend to last year include um purchasing new meters for development, planned development. And also for um deployment upriver, and that is uh scheduled for next year. We also, as in prior years, have been planning on redeployment already, you know, we've been at this deployment process for a long time, so. Redeplement begins in twenty twenty eight, so there are um, there are expenses shown in the plan for that. The other thing that you don't see in this list is generation, um what you did hear a lot about again last month. But it's primarily flat in investment due to project timing in that some type two projects uh are more in the front of the plan. And have a lesser impact on inflation from in terms of project costs, but overall, the increase in the ten year plan is only four hundred thousand. So I did not show it in this slide. So that is the summary that I have for you, and we are open to questions. I do have experts all available if I can't answer your questions.
Thank you.
Brown? Thank you. Can you go back to your first slide or I I just mental math, me, we had um. Forty five million minus eleven, so thirty four million, we're above twenty four to twenty five. Your first one that showed seventeen, eighteen.
This water or electric?
That one.
Water?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, and so we we had forty five in positive, eleven in negative, so we have a debt change of thirty four, but um. Just wondering about the base level reservoir work, minus ten million, and you said it was because partly because forty is complete, but mostly because we delayed. Um, College Hill. Is that correct? Did I hear you right? Because that ten million really, is that a negative number or that cost didn't go away, it's just pushed in another year?
Can you say that one more time? I'm sorry.
Okay, so the ten million.
Can you also, my mind went to what you were saying initially about. The the delta in the plan.
Yeah, there between twenty four and twenty five, the plan went up a debt thirty.
The ten year.
The ten year plan went up a debt thirty four million. If you have you have forty five and pluses and eleven and negatives on that chart, that's a debt thirty four. And uh, and so, but the ten million is.
Sorry, go ahead, yeah.
But the ten million really is the, is that really a negative? Because that's just a cost that's deferred to. That too, because I thought I heard you say that that was because we completed forty, but most of it was for College Hill that was delayed because.
For base level reservoirs, yes. Okay, so it went down because of slow ramp up to College Hill.
Right.
Yeah, so you're asked it pushed pushed forward.
Yeah, got pushed forward, so that cost really is, it's not something that went down, it's just something that pushed into another year.
Well, it's in the ten year plan.
And so we.
So these are all, this is the delta, this is the differences in the ten year plan beginning twenty twenty four to the ten year plan beginning twenty twenty five.
And so, explain to me how we went down ten million dollars, is it a cost savings?
Right.
Yeah, well, I just don't understand it, I'm sorry.
Next year had East Fortieth in it and now that's gone because that is in service.
And was the total cost of that project ten million dollars less than we expected? No, it's on budget. It's not completed, there's gonna be some work left. You know, in landscaping.
Thank you.
Sorry, I wasn't tracking that question.
You know, that's, I just was thinking about this, the fact that for in one year, we go up thirty four, a debt thirty four million dollars, the cost over ten year plan. It's um, pretty alarming to me.
Wally, did you wanna chime in?
Yeah, sure, on the um, we're actually, the plan is is seventeen million dollars higher. The that that top line is just a summary that the whole um ten year plan is seventeen million dollar higher. And all of the items below that are just um kind of the major changes within the plan. So if you add add all those up down below, you'll get to about seventeen million dollars.
Okay, so I, yeah, I apologize, I wasn't reading the top line correctly, but thank you for the clarification, we're still seventeen million bucks that higher than last year at this time. Thank you, Wally.
And on the, on the reservoirs, it's really, you know, we had a a. A trajectory on our base level reservoir work and really we completed one year of reservoir work. That we didn't have another year to slide into it, so it just that completed work slid off, so it's ten million dollars less than. That that line item for last year.
Okay, thank you.
Right, okay.
I was just gonna say, Commissioner Brown, if you look at ten year versus ten years, the fact that twenty twenty four rolled off. Of this year, but twenty thirty four rolled on, twenty thirty four is more expensive than twenty twenty four. So it would be natural that your next ten year view would have some sort of inflationary, even if you were doing similar work. What fell off versus what's replaced in the ten year view would be higher.
It seems like we're doing a lot of, there's a lot of work in this ten year plan. Probably more so than we did. So, my question is then, after this ten year plan, can we expect to be spending less? Like, are we are we kind of doing that work that was done here on the electric side, at least in the sixties and seventies, when the city was growing and and a lot was going in? And then there was some maintenance work, but there weren't like really big projects in the meantime, so. Are we just in like that time period crunch and then it's gonna ease after that?
I have a couple of com- sorry, and. So Karen and Rod can weigh on this in this as well. I think for. Probably a number of sequence of years, we're gonna be looking at a a twenty year. Sort of infrastructure piece of this that is specifically related to replacing that balloon of infrastructure. If you look after that point, there are likely probably other pressures. We we really haven't um. Fully accounted for the trade-offs of revenue versus infrastructure costs on electrification. We've done some minor incorporation electrification, not really a full assessment completely of that. Um, so I think it's going to be at least another decade. Of ten year plans that you're going to see this kind of a window, this kind of a of a age of system. Um, kind of issue. Um, after that, um. Rod can solve problems. Rod, is that a fair assessment, you know, Karen, Rod?
It's all yours.
It's it's not just this ten years and it's over, there's probably a, at least a twenty year. Based on age of system.
I think when you're talking about electric, that's that's a different story than the water. So here we're talking about the water, so we are talking about generational projects over a twenty year period. You know, twenty ten to twenty thirty, there's the Hayden Bridge, second source, all the reservoirs. Uh, all the piping to make that happen. So that that's definitely a a another lump in the snake for so many eighty years for us. Uh, but but Frank is correct on the electric system, it's a slow uh slow burn and we're sort of at the end of that bathtub curve. Of of what's next, so replacing the entire system at one point was estimated at, you know, four hundred. Million dollars or something like that, so uh obviously that's not not what we're capable of doing, so. It will progress uh probably pretty steady for the next fifteen. And that's not talking about uh acquiring new generation resources or or anything like that that we have to do. Or may have the option to do.
Yeah, not not to uh diminish the scale uh comment that Commissioner Carlson made earlier around sort of the meaning of big numbers. Um, if if you look at the electric side specifically around replacement cost. There is a delta of what you have in service versus what your replacement cost is, what's your original cost versus the cost to replace it. And we've seen factors where we've looked at specific assets of somewhere between one and a half and two times. The replacement cost versus the original cost. If you think about seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred million dollars worth of assets. That means we're talking about one point six billion dollars worth of replacement to do on the electric side over some period of time. Um, and then Rod's correct, on the water side, there's a different issue around generational uh projects. Borowski, anything from you?
Thank you. Um. Yeah, a couple of things that kind of have questions about and kind of worries. On the electric side, the type three Carmen Smith, seems to me that Carmen Smith is a a wild hair. Um, you know, trying to budget for that over ten years with all the things that pop up. Seemingly monthly with that project, uh I don't, I don't have any. I don't I don't know what to say about that other than good luck with that one. Um, the the question that I do have. And it it is, it revolves around uh the Lieberg project. And where that falls, you know, it's it's not, it's capital because we have to do it. But it's not capital, it's O and M, and and where does that fall into these long-term financial plans? And what, since we are pre-funding that. What percentage of that fifteen percent increase? And that nine percent increase on water is attributable to the pre-funding of Lieberg? Was it like three percent is what I recall?
Eight percent over the course and for uh this year, actually, we're recommending that. And we've looked at the timing of spending and the inflows associated with that increase. And we're looking to push out that larger increase to twenty twenty seven. So none of the fifteen percent is specifically dedicated to Lieberg on the electric side. And there is nothing on the water side dedicated to Lieberg.
So we're not pre-funding in twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six?
We are continuing to pre-fund from the rate increase last year and then in twenty twenty six adding a percent. And then twenty twenty seven, three percent, as the plan is currently drafted.
Okay, okay, so the the increase when was part of last year's increase and we're not gonna bump it this year, okay? So it's not part of the fifteen percent. Um. So, you know, one of the slides said uh. Property acts acquisitions and it was had had to do with the Roosevelt ones, does that? If we have to do property acquisitions as part of Lieberg, is that in the in this plan or is are those all separate books? The. Is that O and M and we need to look at that in a different work work session?
I believe the property acquisition, some of that is in the plan in the generation side. I'm gonna call on Lisa. I believe the property acquisition, some of that is in the plan in the generation side. I'm going to call on Lisa to verify that.
Yes, good evening, commissioners. Uh, yeah, we do have about approximately $20 million in, uh, the Lieberg CIP. That's type 2 for property acquisitions.
Okay, so, so Lieberg kind of crosses both?
O and M and capital, depending on which portion of the project we're talk, we're talking about, yeah.
Okay, and so do we know what percentage of it is in this, in this budget, in the capital improvement?
Um, I could pull up the table, but if memory serves correctly, we have about 49 million in type 2 for this 10-year CIP. That includes near-term risk reduction measures and real property acquisitions. And then the remainder of the decommissioning work is either O and M or will, um, will be capital after this 10-year plan.
Okay, so then that leads me to the question of, of that $40 million that is in the CIP, is that funded through rate increases? Or is that funded through the pre-funding, uh, glide path that we're on?
I'll defer to Deborah on that one.
So I, I did want to just clarify, we, we have captured the decommissioning costs for Lieberg in the long-term financial plan. Mostly housed in capital because that makes sense as we think about a construction project that's separate maybe of how ultimately it goes to our books. Uh, and it is captured, the decommissioning costs are matched with the revenues we're collecting from pre-funding.
Okay, okay, um, thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, it is pre-funding through rates, those specific designated percentages, uh, that are dedicated to pre-funding.
Okay, okay. I guess, I guess that's, that's all I have at this point. Uh, thank you for the presentation.
I just have this. Good, everybody? I just have one question about where watershed restoration falls in this. I know it's not exactly a capital project, but sometimes it's purchasing property. I don't, where, when we think about combining the long-term financial plan, the capital improvement plan, where does that reside?
Yep, they do have some property acquisition funding. Um, wasn't enough to make the list in here. But most of that work is all O and M and that is being budgeted now.
Okay, yeah, and so that's what, I guess the question I have is around, uh, I know a few months ago, we talked about continuing the surcharge that we currently have in place. And I'm just curious, um, at what point that comes to us for conversation, this probably isn't the right spot. Um, but I'm looking at, we're, um, looking at the budgets and long-term financial plans in October. And just eager to see where, where we had a conversation about a proposal for continuation of that.
We have been, uh, gathering the options for that to bring before you, but since the fee doesn't expire until 26, we thought we would take some time to really think about it, uh, a little more critically about what those options are.
Is it, um, does it matter the timing, the when we make a decision on that? My only question is if we're looking at grants that are a couple of years out, you know, or, or options or potential investments, does it, do we need certainty about whether or not that continues or not? Again, I know you're way closer to this than I am, I just think, uh, if having some certainty about board support or, um, or lack of support for something like that would help us with our long-term planning, uh, feels like doing that soon and then later might be useful, but up to you all.
I, I do think it would be helpful. We need to spend some more time on it.
Anything else on this item? You have all, everything you need for us.
What, just one other thing I wanted to mention back to Commissioner Schlossberg's question. I know that there's a topic later about strategic planning, so I just wanted to mention, you know, I do agree with what Rod said about ongoing investments on the electric side. And it's going to come to the board at some point to think about, you know, those strategic investments. Do we want to modernize the grid to the level where would be a true smart grid? And that would tell us that we need to turn the dial up, um, or we don't. So that, I think those kinds of things would be worth thinking about going forward.
I was just going to make a comment about the agenda check and we are a little bit behind on this item, President McCray. And, um, we'll, we'll do our, our best to, to get through this, but we can also look at some adjustments later in the agenda if we need to.
All right, sounds good. Yeah, we're about 10 minutes behind. We have a 10-minute break planned. I'll propose we just break as long as it takes for us all to get ourselves comfortable and get back here. So if everybody's back here soon, then 10 minutes, we'll, we'll start then. Does that work? So, I'm sorry, is it more?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize there was more, my apologies. Carry on.
Thank you, and actually you all asked really good questions and maybe, uh, maybe you've covered all of my slides at this point. Uh, so the summary of the water long-term financial plan that you're looking at up here, uh, as drafted does remain within, uh, for target metrics. It's worthwhile to note that debt service becomes the strained metric beginning in 2027. And that's, uh, because the utility is poised to take on substantial debt or planned investments of almost $360 million. So that's why you see that yellow in the plan up there. We also have assumed conventional borrowing for, uh, the second treatment plant. Uh, but we are pursuing other options and as, uh, as any other alternative funding becomes available to us, we'll begin to incorporate that in the plan. Uh, so for, uh, the electric utility as presented, uh, we are just below days cash in 2025, but you can see that cash is recovering uh, in 2026. That's really largely a result of poor financial performance in the first quarter of 2024, where we're, we started off this year, uh, with a little bit of a hole. Uh, but it does, it does recover as modeled in, uh, 2026. Rate increases in, uh, this plan compounded are approaching 50%. That is inclusive of, uh, decommissioning of the Lieberg project. So that 50% does include, uh, the 8% that we are dedicating to the decommissioning of that facility. This plan is supporting 635 million, uh, in infrastructure investments for the electric utility. Uh, and the rate increases that are dedicated to Lieberg are sufficient, uh, to fund those costs as projected. Trying to save us time here. Uh, we talked about a lot of this already and some of this conservatism, uh, you've seen, but there are some new things that I do want to highlight. I did mention that we're extending the, uh, 5% capital inflation for a year further than we had the last time that we showed this plan. And then 3% on O and M, uh, as, uh, we, we may finish, the generic CPI finished at 3.3. So the Fed continues to, uh, work monetary policy to drive that down. Uh, but we've been more conservative in the next two years. Uh, as we've seen that really lag behind where the Fed and EWEB wanted that to be. We are modeling the creation of an emergent regulatory fund of $5 million next year, uh, growing to $30 million over the life of the plan. And we incorporated BPA rates earlier than we normally would, uh, because they were signaling a number that was much higher than what we were forecasting. We won't know until, uh, much later, next summer, how that will ultimately play into our rates. Uh, but we did incorporate that initial number. And, uh, we're also modeling an increase of our capital reserves, reflecting that construction costs continue to go up of $4 million over the tenure, uh, of our power reserve uh, to mitigate, uh, volatility in our power markets and our generation and our working cash as costs go up. So we're capturing that, that we believe in the future that those reserves will have to, uh, rise. So those are some of the new ways that we're capturing some conservatism in this plan and working to mitigate some of the risks, uh, that we see out there. I am in a hurry tonight. Let's try that. That's why they don't give me the clicker. Uh, so this, uh, the, the increase in revenue requirement for the electric utility would result in approximately a $28 increase on the, on the average bill. And for the water side, just under $4. These numbers that you see here are as of June, they do not reflect any increase for EWEB or any increases that, uh, we either know or anticipate our comparators, uh, will implement. If, uh, Blatchley Lane were to do nothing, we would overtake them on the comparator chart. Uh, and, uh, same on the water side, we would move up over Roseburg. But again, uh, we don't have any information at this state as to where the, as to where our comparators will come in with rates. Back to you all for questions.
Thanks. Questions? I hate to do this because we're running behind, but I was here, you know, this organization almost went bankrupt during, uh, and you guys budgeted 85% water and said never again. Now we're at 90%. And it seems to me that the water is getting lower. So what does it do if we want to take a conservative approach and budget for 85% water like we did historically for years and years? In fact, I'm going to share that position paper that Farmer, we got a big discussion about it when we went from 85 to 90 years ago. What does that do to this? I mean, just generally speaking, how, how much does that tip us over? So if we go conservative and go 85 instead of 90?
I would really like to, um, get back to you with that so that I make sure that we, uh, properly calculate that for you. Um, one of the things, uh, that we are doing, so we balance that collecting what we think that, uh, uh, we will need for the coming year from our rate pairs in that year with that need for conservatism. And that's part of the reason why you see the power reserve, it went up this year and it, and we have modeled $4 million more in increases to that reserve so that, uh, we are able to withstand, like we did this year, uh, a rough start to the year. But we can get that sensitivity analysis to you.
The other two, I saw in your projections, Lieberg, um, it sort of looks like there's large capital expenditures on Lieberg decommitment in 2026, 27, what's that? The, the reserves, the amount was way down, that goes like from $2 million back up to $10 million.
Again, yeah, I, I can get back to you with, um, details, but, uh, I'm pretty sure that's a combination of near-term risk reduction measures and possibly some, um, property acquisitions, but I believe the majority of it is near-term risk reduction measures. I can get back to you with that if I am incorrect.
And then the last group, what is, uh, fish ladder was $40 million eight years ago. That comes in.
Sorry, go ahead.
I, I just was wondering if, uh, the fish ladder gets thrown in here.
At Carmen Smith?
Yep.
Uh, the, the current, um, CIP includes our current license requirements, which is a trap and haul, uh, not a fish ladder. The, uh, cost for a fish ladder, uh, back when it was originally scoped, I can't recall, I think you're about correct. Um, but that 40 million might have been the floating fish screen. Think the, the fish ladder was, um, less expensive, although we would expect it to be more now. But the current CIP again is our license requirements that include trap and haul.
Thank you. Other questions? All right. I'll just, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Borowski, thank you, Minnie.
Thank you. Um, couple of things on, on your last slide. It would have been helpful if that had the, the price increase on there. Uh, it looks like that's what we're comparing to now. So 190, but you got to add 15% to that. So just for future reference, if you are anticipating putting, putting that in, that would be helpful for me to see where the actual comparators are, even though we don't know what our competitors are going to be doing. It's, it's just, that's, that, that slide does nothing for me really at this point. The most important thing that I think I, I am going to hopefully that we can get out of this is we need to really be able to have our communication, uh, planned down for this. Getting the word out to our customers and our, and the community about 15%. Uh, you, you know, electricity and a, and the water increase. It's a big job. Telling the story is going to be important. You know, we've already seen some, some negative things. We've had a lot of good positive reactions coming out of the, the ice storm. And I want to just continue on that. Our communications team has been doing a really good job. But I think that this is another one where we're going to really have to work hard to make sure that we get our story out and, and tell the story about the aging infrastructure and the reason that we're doing this. All of the good reasons that we understand in this room, but getting the public to understand those and not just see a 15% increase plastered across the headlines like we see from the other utilities. Um, I know when I read, uh, a headline that, you know, Portland General's going up 17%, that's as far as I get, right? And so telling that story, I think is going to be very important for what I would like to see going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right.
Commissioners, I'll just be really quick with this. Uh, we appreciate the feedback around the priorities, uh, the issues, uh, the questions. These, the, the intent of the long-term financial plan is to provide context around the investments that we need to make. And, and Commissioner Borowski is, is correct. These, the difference between an expense and an investment is that there is a, an expected return on that investment. And so we understand that both the obligation and the opportunity that comes around communicating this. We appreciate your feedback around everything from concerns to questions that we know if you have, that the public will have, um, because of who you represent and the governance that you provide. And so, um, we appreciate, uh, again, your feedback. Uh, we'll take this and start to address some of the questions. There are a number of related topics coming up, uh, such as rate design, follow-up on long-term finances, capital investments, and all that will continue, uh, especially and, and around the communications plan associated with this. So, uh, I think I can, I can speak for Deborah and Karen that we got the feedback that we needed. And we'll expect that, um, much of this conversation will continue over the next number of months. So we appreciate that unless you had anything further for us.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We'll take a shorter break as we can muster. Be safe.
Breaking facial. Because it's still that long.
Next to the wildfire season and mitigation plan update with Janine and Tyler.
Guess we're gonna skip through the slides before.
Yeah, that may require a little jump in the head.
Sorry, spoilers all.
Wait, no, stop all attention.
All right. Spoiled ours too. There we go. Nope, that's even the punchlines of the first other one. Hi, Jane, looks like you're on. You want to kick it off?
Oh, sure, sure. We have not rehearsed this part very well. So hello, everyone. Thank you for making time for this important topic in your busy agenda. We have a quick wildfire season update. By way of introduction, I'm Janine Parisi. I'm the Resiliency Program Manager. And Tyler, if you want to introduce yourself.
Nice electric operations manager.
So we'll just get right into it. If you jump to the next slide for me, Tyler, are you driving? Awesome. Thank you so much. Well, greetings from Asbury Park. It is a 96% humidity, but in Oregon, where you guys are having a heat dome, I thought I would start with a little bit of a seasonal forecast. This is from the Climate Prediction Center. And nice to start with a little good news. So for this wildfire season, we are moving into a year where there's significantly less drought compared to the past few years when we've started going into wildfire season. Last year, we had an average amount of snowfall, average amount of precipitation for all of Oregon. So we are looking good on that front. If you go to the next slide, please. This is from the Climate Prediction Center from back in June before this recent heat dome. And what they're saying at that point was that compared to the rest of the country, our section of the Northwest were looking like we would have about average temperatures, maybe slightly warmer, average precipitation. And, you know, that would equate to kind of a typical wildfire season. You know, things can change a lot and they have recently. But if the, you know, the prediction centers are also suggesting that we're going to be moving into a La Niña pattern. And what La Niña typically means is that you'll start seeing cooler, wetter temperatures. So my hope is that these precipitation patterns arrive in time for peak wildfire season, brings up humidity levels and lowers the chances for catastrophic wildfire. So that's the hope. But as you know, these are forecasts and predictions and we have to get ready no matter what. So I'm going to let Tyler take the next couple of slides and talk about some of the preparation we've been doing for this year's wildfire season.
Thanks, Janine. Well, again, thanks for the moment to give a reminder, hopefully, on some of these things. Hopefully this is a bit repetitive because we're getting into a cadence of how we operate during wildfire season, but also as we'll share in this and beyond some, some improvements we've been making. So really, we start our operational readiness. We started in, in May, we had Oregon Department of Forestry come in and do some training. It's a picture from the training. They inspect all of our tooling, make sure we have the right equipment on the trucks, our water cans, our water trailers, check our chainsaws for the right, you know, fire safety. And then another thing we did prior to fire season was a PSPS drill, Public Safety Power Shut-Off Drill, centered around a scenario around upriver in our McKenzie Territory. And so we worked through that with all representatives from all the different sections of our ICS and also field staff and really use that opportunity to imagine through that and using the one we did in 2021 and, and kind of using those hot wash items to, and we did make some changes and improvements even before we have one. So that was positive. Fast forward to last week, we had on July 3rd, we moved to IFPL Level 2, which is industrial, industrial fire protection level that ODF specifies in our, in our protocols that, that enacts our protective settings, wildfire protected settings, and those will remain in for the season until it goes back down to Level 1. Last year, we were in that level until September, so likely something similar. So we put those in on the 3rd, they went into the, the IFPL went up midnight the 4th, and we did experience two red flags over the last weekend. I guess I'll count Monday as a weekend. And for those, we didn't have any trips within those red flag situations, but, but we did have a trip up river that we did enact another protocol we have, which is to patrol every, patrol every inch of wire. That ended up being a small bird that caused it, but we did verify no other ignitions or no other trees involved. Other things we did in preparation was collaboration. We've been, we participated in a couple of roundtables with local utilities. Also, some, some of our staff went to wildfire conferences this year to stay up on new techniques, new analysis. And we also participated with Alain County in a tabletop exercise. Another section that we've been working on heavily the last few years is around our annual proactive maintenance. Another standard for utilities is to, in requirement for PUC is to up your frequency on patrols and inspections around lines, both vegetation and the components. So the chart's kind of demonstrating and HF RZ is high fire risk zone. So all of our circuits that are defined in those zones, we do what we call safety patrols. So we patrol those same, same as we would for a PUC inspection, but annually, that identifies equipment could be rotten poles, rotten crossarms, insulators, and that becomes a work queue that we work through in the first couple quarters of the year. So you can see first couple of years, crossarms is a really good example. We found quite a bit of those because some of those may have been anywhere in our 10-year cycle of PUC. And so we kind of get all caught up on that maintenance. And so last year, eight vegetation management, similar, we do similarly, we do that annually. Now we are behind on our routine maintenance around the city because of the different events, fire events we've had the last couple of years in short staffing with the contractor. But as far as vegetation management in these circuits, those are all addressed at this point prior to fire season. So that's a good way to start our area there. The, the other ones are around some of the customer support is something we've been continuing on. You know, our generator program and supporting the secondary undergrounding for holiday farm fires impacted folks. And then also our fuels work is starting, that program is starting to come to an end. You can see the, the acres and sizes and sites going down. Another notable is around our transformer upgrades. That one is up last year and this year for a different reason. Just noting that we did experience some loosening, I'll say, of the supply chain issues with our distribution transformers, got shipments of those in and started back up on a program replacing all those upriver transformers. Two benefits in that allows us to reconfigure it for a lower risk configuration. And, and also the, these new transformers that we have committed to have FR3, which is the trade term for soybean oil instead of mineral oil. It's got a higher flashpoint, better for the environment all around benefit. And kind of the final layer. So I talked about the things to do before fire season and then some, some, some preparatory measures, some work we do along the inspection side. And then this slide's kind of giving you an example of what we see daily. So we've contracted last year and again this year with a daily weather forecast from, from the Western Weather Group. And so what they do is they give us this kind of custom sheet for our area using vetted weather stations that are applicable to our zones and including our Hayden Bridge weather station. They highlight high fire danger for us. So things like red flags, unless they're really surprising, we usually see them coming. That can allow us to prepare a little bit more. This is kind of in lieu of, of, you know, larger utilities may have a meteorological staff. So this is really helpful for us last year and we're going to continue doing it to just, it just puts your antenna up, gets you in the game and, and stays situational awareness is just really paramount in these to, to prepare, get staff engaged. And then also allows us to check on availability going into weekend or holidays or if something's coming. That's kind of the key to a good response is being prepared. It, another notable that we're working towards is another weather station that we're planning, we are under contract with for later this year in South Eugene in the near Blanton Heights. That's going to be added to this and just increase our accuracy of, of the forecast. That'll toss it back to Janine with the community side.
Sure. And, you know, part of our operational readiness is really helping our customers get prepared for potential summer outages. You know, that could be due to the higher sensitivity settings where you often see more trips and a little bit longer outages because of the patrol times or an actual PSPS event. So we've updated our communication strategies after the 2022 PSPS based on some feedback we got and lessons learned. So we're providing way more summer outage tips that are really specific to electrical outages in the summertime. And now we have a PSPS watch and warning. It's a color-coded system. And really the goal here is even if we don't enact a PSPS, if we enact a warning, it gives people that preparatory time so they can go get ice or fill up their cars and make sure they have fuel because when power goes out, the gas stations don't work, you know, all of that, all those secondary issues. We just had the emergency preparation newsletter go out to about 5,000 customers and it completely focused on stuff like PSPS and summer preparedness. So, and part of that was also a call to action to promote our PSPS Enhanced Support Program. That's our program for vulnerable customers. So I'll get to that more later, but just to say that communications and outreach is an important component of this work. Next slide. I'm going to give you the highlight reel. You know, I'm very enthusiastic about this work. I could go on for a long time, but I'll go very quickly through some new mitigation work you might not have heard about since the last time we met in July. One of them has to do with our vendor that we're working with, Overstory. We did a pilot project last year to acquire satellite imagery and this vendor uses machine learning or artificial intelligence to assess encroachment risk on our overhead lines. And that tool kind of helps us identify where we might be seeing more vigorous tree growth in between those trimming cycles for extra attention. So based on last year's imagery, the analysis found that less than 10% of the overhead lines they looked at fell in that higher risk category, meaning like there was vegetation within six feet of clearance. And what that tells me is that the work that our vegetation management group is doing, is doing a really great job at maintaining clearance. And we can really use this tool to target and prioritize our maintenance work. Next slide. The other thing this tool does is it gives us a heat map and clusters of where we are seeing dead and dying trees that could pose a fallen risk to our overhead lines. So this just shows you an example of what the tool provides. You can see those red spots. Those are areas where we have a lot of high tree mortality. And we used this and checked out this area. It's just kind of east of Thurston. Crews went out, took a second look at this area and were able to do some additional hazard tree removal this spring. Next slide. So this map shows the larger area we have planned for the 2024 analysis. So the satellite imagery is collected annually. So in addition to South Eugene and our upriver territory, we are also capturing more of Northeast Eugene and the entire Carmen Smith transmission line as part of this analysis. And I believe that, you know, especially after the winter storm we had, the ice storm, that these heat maps for the hazard trees is going to be really helpful in taking a look at that Carmen line and actually more of Eugene. So we're looking forward to seeing some of that analysis come through later this summer. Next slide. Um, we have plans underway for a number of new reliability enhanced. We have plans underway for a number of new reliability enhancements that will reduce the number and length of outages, hasten restoration, protect birds, and hopefully reduce ignition risk. The first thing I wanted to talk about was replacing our fault indicators and our high-risk fire zone circuits. The fault indicators help locate faults for quicker restoration, and these newer devices also coordinate with our wildfire safety fast-trip settings. So as part of that installation, we'll also be using last year's load analysis to right-size nearly 200 fuses upriver. These smaller fuses just release less energy. So if they do blow, you have less ignition risk. So, and that work to replace the fuses, about 200 fuses and 160 fault indicators, we hope to get that underway this month. The second project I wanted to mention is the Trip Savers. You can see a picture on that middle slide. This is a recloser device that helps clear temporary faults. So those transient faults don't result in a full-blown outage. And you know, our analysis shows that and vendor analysis that anywhere around 50% of your faults can be transient. So we expect significant reliability improvements, especially in the winter time and the spring when we have a lot of windstorms come through and you have those branches touching the overhead lines. Those should clear much more frequently, which means fewer truck rolls. It means more staff efficiency. And we selected locations that have a history of high repeat outages and higher downstream customers to optimize the benefits of these devices. So there was a three to four-month lead time on these devices. So we hope to get those in maybe August, September, and have them in place and time for this winter. Last thing I wanted to mention is a pilot project to try different types of protected coverings on equipment that, our equipment that's below nesting platforms and the poles on either side. So depending on how our pilot installs go, we will expand that pilot to about two dozen other nesting platforms. And really, the goal is to reduce the potential for arcing and sparking from nesting materials that drop down onto our equipment. And avian coverings are actually a best practice to reduce bird mortality. So here we have a potential win-win-win to address ignition risk, to protect our equipment, have less equipment failure, but also to protect our feather friends. Next slide. A lot of these projects I just talked to are potentially eligible for reimbursement through the federal grant, grid grant that we've received. So the weather station, the satellite imagery project, the Trip Savers I've just talked about. So in addition to getting some reimbursement for some of those projects, we've just applied for a new round of funding through the State Grid Resiliency Grant. And that project, that grant request will do a couple of things. One, it will fund additional fault indicators to fill in the gaps on long spans of overhead upriver and to purchase more advanced recloser devices. But really, the bulk of the funding is for a grid hardening project on about nine miles of older primary wire up in the Cedar Flats area. So at the bottom of that screen, you can see that yellow highlight. That's Cedar Flats, and that area was really identified by our fire partners as an area of higher risk because of poor egress. And it's kind of in a communication void. So when power goes out, folks don't have good cell service. So from our public safety officials, this is a really high priority area for additional work. It was also hammered by the ice storm, so it's a good place to do some targeted work. So what that work would look like is the hardening would be a combination of reconfiguring those older lines to a streamlined format, replacing older poles. We're going to pilot advanced conductor and/or target, do some targeted undergrounding where feasible. So we're looking at about a $1.2 million project that would be about 70% funded through the state. Next slide. So I mentioned the P S P S Enhanced Support Program earlier, but the grant that we just put in for would also build on that program that we launched last year, which is really supporting those who are most at risk for power outage. And those are folks who are medically reliant on power. So what I've asked, as a reminder, this program, for people who are enrolled in our Enhanced Support Program, they will receive direct notice from a customer survey agent in advance of a P S P S event, if we have 24 hours notice, obviously. So as part of the grant application, the additional work we would do is we've asked for funds to purchase small portable battery generators to power that medical equipment during outages. So there's about 15 to 20 people currently enrolled in our Enhanced P S P S program, and those folks would be good candidates for outreach to see if they're interested in having that additional peace of mind of having that battery back up for their medical devices and not having to hassle with diesel generators, especially when wildfire risk is high. And next steps, we're wrapping up here. Just getting back to that foundational wildfire mitigation work, you know, to effectively target your investments. You could spend a lot of money on this, but really to be strategic about where you put that money, you need to know where your wildfires are most likely to happen in your system and where they create the most hazardous conditions to public safety. So we have a fire risk modeling experts that are working on updating our wildfire analysis, our modeling work to validate and refine where our high-fire risk zones are. And we anticipate that we'll have early results this fall from that work. And then we have a pipeline of work planned for the remainder of 2024 and into 2025, including more work in South Eugene, both non-explosive fusing and hopefully another targeted undergrounding project in the South Hills. I'm trying to use up the last of that 2016 FEMA funding that we got many, many years ago, but we're working through that process, and you know, anything with FEMA takes some time. We're in discussions with the U of O for another Alert Wildfire Camera upriver. And if the state grant is successful, we will have that Cedar Flats project to both plan and install. So there is quite a lot of work to, ahead of us. So if we go to this last slide, I'm going to wrap up just to say that we have time for some questions, but really the takeaway is that 2023 was largely a planning year, and now we have quite a bit of work in motion. And none of this can be done without a team effort. So I just want to give a call out, and thanks to the engineering staff who have been working closely with me, my communications team, who is always in my back pocket and supporting the work that we're doing, standards group and the operational folks who are willing to try some new tools out in the field and give us feedback on how it's working. In terms of next steps for the board, we'll be back to you with an updated wildfire mitigation plan for your review and approval in early 2025. Because that's when we'll have that updated high-fire risk zone maps, which is part of the P U C compliance, we have to have that. And then we'll have that full year of 2024 metrics to share with you. So with that, I will stop, and that was just an extra slide, so you don't even need to go to that one. But you can look at it. It's a pretty slide. You're happy to, you're welcome to take a look at it. Thank you.
Thanks, Janine. Questions, comments?
Real quick, on the generators, I read a headline recently about the risk of them actually starting fires. I know part of the generator loan program was started, we had power outage, I think specifically when it was really cold. But I, obviously, in the same situation, we have to turn the power off for those who need them. Do you have any sense about the risk of the generators? And if that's, continue, if that will additionally add to the risk in a fire season situation?
My supposition is that a battery-powered generator is going to have less fire risk than a diesel-powered or a propane-powered generator. So I think this should, and that these are not the size that can empower an entire house. They're really, you know, smaller generators that are devised for more appliance use. So I'd imagine that these would actually reduce fire risk from some other traditional generator types.
And that's, that's what the incentive is for, is specifically for the batterator, the battery types for the, for the folks that have medical issues that might need it.
Can say.
Yes, and I would say it's not necessarily an incentive. What I, you know, we haven't designed the program yet. If we get the grant, there's some program design work to do, but the intention would be for people who are income-eligible, these would be more of a grant-funded, here is a generator.
Oh, I see, okay. Because I know that a while ago, we started having these severe storms. Upriver, we started a loan program for generators. So that's a separate, okay, I was conflating the two, thank you.
Frank, I was just going to mention Commissioner Carlson. As part of that loan program, we do have some requirements that the customer use automatic transfer switches, and there's some protective. It's not like you're just going to run a bunch of extension cords. There's some other requirements to qualify for the loan.
Thank you.
It is a good point, though, too, you make. There are a lot of folks with standard generators, gas generators, diesel generators, and do have to be cautious about that and think it through, not putting out in dry grass field. But you know, as long as it's installed, operated, is it something that the O D F talks about too? It's a trade-off, you know, of not having comms and not having resources. But thinking through that a little bit.
Are you seen already about talking in public about what perception was of one of the basis for the lawsuits? The Holden Creek Substation. Finding power and somebody else is getting power.
I'd rather you not until we check in. We have a check-in Thursday, and I'd be happy, and we can just discuss it as well.
Shut things off, so that's done.
I think I know where you're from.
Anything for you, John Borowski, go ahead.
Thanks. Thank you for the presentation, Janine. Excellent work from you and all the staff going forward. As somebody who represents the South Hills in my districts, Ward Two and Three, you know, I, I think that we've done a pretty good job of getting the word to the upriver people about the risks of, you know, when we have to do a power shut-off, they understand it. I think that there's more work to be done for that if we were ever to have to do one in the South Hills. And so I'm hoping that we can, can work on that in the future. Something that would be really helpful for me is getting some sort of a memo from you that kind of breaks down this stuff, this presentation that you had into, not necessarily an elevator speech, but we will be meeting, Matt and I and senior staff are going to be meeting with the leaders of the City of Eugene right now in the upcoming month. And I know that the Board President and Vice President of Eugene Chamber are very keen on these issues. Both Matt and Randy Groves are both really intense on this. And so if we could have, if I could, if you could whittle it down so I can share some of these things that we're doing, especially when it comes to the South Hills. Because for me, you know, upriver, it's more sparsely populated. If we were to have a wildfire in the South Hills, you know, it could be much more devastating. Although we have more resources to put them out, we also have hills that are steep and can go up, as we've seen in many communities in California. So having that information to share with them, I think would be a great topic to have for us to share in our upcoming meetings. So that would be very helpful for me. Thank you.
Sure. Can, when is that meeting, Commissioner?
We're working on a date on that, but it's coming up fairly soon. It was supposed to be in a week or two, but, and I could have condensed your plan into that, but I think we're pushing it back. We haven't really had it set yet.
Yeah, and I'll just make one quick comment. I really appreciate the team seeking grant funds to help with the battery generator program. And, but I also know there's a proliferation of small batteries with inverters that are really relatively inexpensive for what they do. I have one myself, they're kind of amazing little contraptions. And I would hope that if we don't get grant funds, that we might see a proposal come to the board to fund some small pilot project to do that. Because I think helping folks with medical devices, you know, that most vulnerable group as we look at more public safety shut-offs is an obvious thing for us to invest in. So thanks for pursuing the grant funds, eager to see that program happen. Anything else? Great, all right, on to the next item, which is the 2025 Energy Resource Study and the B P A Product Choice Overview. Brian, Megan, Ben, Aaron.
Just while they're coming up. Given the timing of the agenda and the importance of this item, we can postpone the strategic discussion, if you would like, until August. There's not a specific driver this evening for that. And rather have your full attention on this particular item than to be dragging this out for too long, just offering that for the board's consideration.
Is that all right with you, Borowski? If we postpone item number 12, he says yes. Boy, vigorously supported by Borowski. All right.
If you'd like, we could postpone everything on here and just pick it up.
All right, Brian.
One thing, you know, we don't, we don't ever get a break. All other commissions, they like take a month or two off.
All right, good evening, Commissioners. I am Brian Booth, Chief Energy Resource Officer here at EWEB. To my left on down, I have Megan Chapper, Energy Resource Manager, Aaron Bush, Senior Analyst, and Ben Holrick, our Lead Analyst on this project. I'm going to go ahead and hand it off to Megan to get it started. And I'll be back at the end to talk, talk timeline.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. We're here tonight to discuss the upcoming 2028 Bonneville Power Contract Decision, which is in alignment with our Board Goal Number Six. Goal Number Six outlines actions from the 2023 Integrated Resource Plan, where we recognize the first step in defining our portfolio of the future is to analyze the B P A product options through an Energy Resource Study, our E R S. Overall, the intent of this presentation tonight is to educate the board about the product options coming from the B P A. And secondly, discuss our plan for management, executives, and the board to align on a B P A product decision. As a reminder, back in March, we provided context around the Bonneville Power Administration, our analytical approach, both qualitative and quantitative decision criteria, and we discussed our stakeholder engagement process. Tonight, I'm going to update you on changes to our timeline. Aaron will provide you with information on our current understanding of the Bonneville product options, recognizing that discussions in these products designs are still ongoing. And we also want to update the board about the creation of an executive steering committee, which will help ensure internal alignment between the work group and the board in the months ahead. Later in the presentation, Brian will also talk about the interconnection of our B P A product decision, our business model, and our business model in terms of resource strategy and markets. So let's go to the timeline. Before handing it off to Aaron to educate on the product options, I want to quickly touch base on our timeline. The most significant change since March is B P A is requiring a product decision by June 2025, while contract signing still is December 2025. Our current timeline is shorter than what we showed you in March because B P A requires six months between product decision and signing. This is driven by two things. The first thing is B P A staff need time to prepare individual utility-specific contracts and exhibits. And secondly, B P A staff need three years between the signing and the effective date of the contract to implement, given new products and new markets. For this reason, we've condensed our approach to making this decision as represented on the timeline. I'm going to hand it off to Aaron to talk about the B P A product options before Brian will dive into the new timeline and business model decision.
Hey, thank you, Megan. And I will admit, I have more versions of screens up here than I'm used to. So hopefully I don't lose myself in all of my graphics. So I'm going to talk about the Bonneville products. Just want to start off, like Megan said, we're still developing these things, right? It's ongoing discussions. I was literally in a meeting today talking about the rate design. And we're going to try and finish a lot of that up by this fall, and we're going to incorporate all of that into the modeling analysis going forwards. For the products themselves, one of the things to keep in mind is that Bonneville broadly said that the future products are going to look like the offerings today. But there are some pretty substantial updates around kind of the market compatibility. So we talked about organized markets coming, the future products need to be able to work with those. The rate designs, Bonneville's changing some of the ways they do rates, and specifically new product options, block with shaping, that would give EWEB an additional option to what exists right now. So this is the list of products. So there's basically five options, different ways to pair things. But the first up there is slice block, then block standalone, block with some shaping capacity, so that's the ability to move energy up and down, whereas the block standalone is kind of a flatter product, it doesn't move energy. It doesn't move energy up and down very much to follow load. Uh, and then that new is block shaping capacity in peak load variance. So basically, that's providing some ability to move energy up and down to follow load, but also some additional service from Bonneville to meet more extreme peak events. Uh, and then finally, the load following product. Um, where Bonneville literally follows the customer's load. Um, and so as you see that kind of fit to load shape uh image there up in the top, so the slice block, the product we have now is Bonneville's providing a lease service, right? So it's kind of the the shape of what the federal system does. EWEB is taking a lot on a lot of that management uh and reshaping it to fit our load. So we've got a lot of local control over that. Uh, and as you move down that product list, Bonneville's providing additional services. Uh, and you're paying additional rates for those services until you get down to load falling, where Bonneville's kind of providing the most service for EWEB. Uh, one of the other things to to kind of keep in mind between these products is on the very right-hand side there, that non-federal resource flexibility. So for EWEB, this would be resources like Carmen Smith and Walterville, other resources that are dedicated to serve our load. Um, and you see there's four green yes boxes. Uh, that's for kind of all the quote-unquote planned products. So for those products, Bonneville's offering power on a planned basis. They're not trying to meet our real-time load. Uh, and in exchange, they give us more flexibility about how to operate those resources. Uh, for the load following product, where Bonneville is trying to literally follow our load, they need more certainty on the amount of energy that our resources are bringing. Uh, and so there's additional requirements on some of those uh resources for us. Okay, so diving into some of these images, uh, this one again is that list of the five product options. Uh, and kind of this this image is showing on a planning basis. So you kind of think about heading into a year. Uh, how much capacity? So in this sense, how how much is the product able to flex and help you have meet peak loads? Um, and so you can see there's varying amounts, that's the stacked bars. Each product is going to offer a little bit different ability to do that. Uh, and the context I want to provide here is that as we move forwards and look at the Western Resource Adequacy Program, that's the RAP. Um, that's a common standard that the region is looking at to ensure reliability. And EWEB has said, yep, we're looking at that. We think it's a good thing to participate in. And that would have some obligations for EWEB about meeting those capacity needs, that ability to meet peaks. Uh, and in the past, we focused on energy. Uh, but really now this piece of capacity meeting peaks is going to be uh one of the differentiators between products. Um, and for this specific image, if you look at that red line across the middle, that's EWEB's uh kind of average annual energy. So you can see uh at this base level, all the products are intended to meet our energy needs. And it's the ability to kind of flex and meet peak loads and variable loads. It's a little different between the products. Um, as for the the stacks themselves, you can see that the green bar on the bottom there, that represents our dedicated resources like Carmen again. So there's a piece of that that Bonneville's going to expect us for those resources to to serve our load with those. And now moving across this image and from left to right. Um, so the block alone, right, we talked about that being a flatter product. It doesn't flex to meet different loads. Uh, and so that dotted purple line represents kind of average peak load for EWEB. And so for that specific product, um, there would be a gap. We would have to go fill that with something else that quote-unquote non-federal resource. There's a lot of different options to, that's the kind of thing that we do today. But it's just recognizing that for that product, there is a cap to that specific uh load. And then next is the slice block product combination. And you can see the block on the bottom there and the slice in lighter blue. So that's showing that basically the slice has more ability to help meet peak loads. Uh, there's some more complexity with slice and water gear variability. But in general, the thing to take away there is that slice does offer some ability to flex. Uh, the next product there is block with shaping. So that option from Bonneville is basically saying, okay, we're going to provide you with roughly the energy you need to meet peaks, but also some ability to flex that up and down, um, some some hourly flexibility to help meet loads. Uh, and they've said roughly the intent is to try and meet an average kind of one and two peak with that product. Uh, the next one you'll see has a little light teal section on top. Um, that is the peak load variance service. So technically, there's a lot of Bonneville jargon here. But basically, it's an additional service we could purchase from Bonneville to help us meet another kind of higher peak again. So we're basically adding services on from Bonneville to help uh cover different load events. Uh, on the very far right is load following. Uh, and again, you see that that is uh meeting kind of all of the the different load events. Uh, and I want to add in a couple additional lines across the top here, just as kind of a a barometer to to look at the the different amount of on a planning basis, what these different products are doing. So this one in ten load, that's basically saying uh an infrequent load event. Uh, that's the intent of that peak load variance service. It's intended to roughly align with that. You can see that as you get to a more extreme event, there's gaps um that we would need to fill with non-federal resources. And then the last one on here is the RAP planning reserve margin. So that number is basically looking at, again, a reliability standard that EWEB is opting in and saying, yep, we want to participate in this. And it's something that we are looking at as kind of a standard metric in the energy resource study that EWEB would look at meeting. And so the various combinations of like and then a combination of non-federal resources to fill any gaps. So, um, moving on to kind of, that was a planning basis, looking at uh in the kind of an individual peak day. Um, so on the bottom here, you'll see one to twenty-four, those are the hours of the day. On the left, uh, Y-axis is megawatts. And basically showing a single day's load profile and how a resource stack uh under each of these product options might meet uh that load. And these are all examples. This is not actual data, it's kind of made up to to represent what the products would do. Um, so you can see here that that flat block, the dark blue on the bottom, it's super dependable, uh, but it's not responding to the load, right? It it just is what it is, and we've got, uh, it's not moving to meet a load event. The slice, again, with there's some water gear uncertainty and variability there. Uh, but you can see it is responding, and we can reshape that to help meet the peak loads. Uh, the dark green, that's our dedicated resources with this type of product. Again, we're operating them efficiently to try and help meet peaks. Uh, and you can see that dotted salmonish color line is roughly the one and two peak. So you can see it's in that ballpark. And then the dotted red line is kind of a more extreme peak. Uh, so again, with slice block, this is going to vary, but in general, as you get some more extreme peaks, there's a, there's a gap that we need to figure out how to fill, and that could be long-term purchases. It could be shorter term, but it's something we need to figure out uh on our own how to manage. Uh, so the next one here is the block only product. Um, so you can see it's got that kind of big dark blue band across the bottom. The block isn't moving to respond to changes in load. Um, our dedicated resources in the dark green like Carmen are still being operated efficiently to try and help meet that peak in the morning. Uh, but then you can see the light gray color there. Uh, that's the kind of other non-federal is a bit bigger. So because we didn't have Bonneville responding as much, we have to go out uh and figure out how to fill the gap uh with other resources. Uh, the next one here is the block with shaping, uh, and then also the version with peak load variance service. So the dark blue is the block with shaping. Uh, and basically, this is showing, it Bonneville's going to give us some energy and some ability to move that where we need it. Uh, so you can see that the dark blue is responding as the load moves. Uh, and with our dedicated resources like Carmen, that dark green, they're still being operated efficiently. And the intent of that base product is to help us meet kind of an average peak load. So you can see it's roughly in line with the the light sanding dotted line there. Uh, but then there's the light teal up on top. Um, and that light teal represents kind of the additional service we could procure from Bonneville to help us meet more extreme peaks. Um, and then at the very top, there's a light gray sliver. Uh, it's more complicated, but it might not be an exact crosswalk to the most extreme of peaks. Um, still working on exactly what that looks like for this product. Uh, and last is the load following product. Um, you notice this image looks a bit different from the others, and that's because the load following product is a different kind of product. Being Bonneville with load following is trying to follow our loads. They're actually meeting our hourly loads. And so in exchange for that, they want more certainty on what our resources are doing. So you notice that the dark green is at the bottom of the image there. That's basically showing that Bonneville would give you a more restrictive requirement on how we operate, what we need to bring uh for those not uh resource energy and capacity amounts. But then on top of that, Bonneville is filling all the gaps. So whatever our load does, uh, Bonneville is going to fill those gaps. So again, there there's a distinction here in kind of how we actually meet load, whether it's Bonneville or other resources. Uh, but again, as you get additional service from Bonneville, you're paying additional rates from that. And that's going to be part of the energy resource study is looking at that combination and how all those pieces fit together. Um, so as a kind of a broad summary of those different products, right, the products have different levels of cost and service and risk. Um, and the product trace is going to have some implications for overall portfolio decisions. You kind of saw that in the the very terms and the operations and the non-federal resource amounts across the products. That energy resource study, we're going to put together a rates model. We're going to look at how the products operate and what we get from Bonneville and the non-federal pieces, and we're putting all of that together. Um, the one thing is, we've talked about this eternally, keeps coming up. Those are like capacity and this this peaking ability is an important piece, but it's not capturing everything. There's a lot of qualitative discussions and other pieces that factor into this, whether it be the meat and control over some of these pieces of Bonneville. Um, where is your values locally? What are we trying to do in terms of office control? And Brian's going to talk a little bit more about some of those pieces in a minute. I just want to highlight that this is kind of the overall uh operations of products. There's a lot of details that I'm leaving out, but trying to capture at a high level the distinctions. I'll have it to Brian to talk about next up.
Thank you, Aaron. All right, that's better. Now I can see the screen. So we're going to start off really quick, uh, checking on the executive steering committee. Um, management and staff have performed the E S C. This is a very high priority, very expensive decision that we were facing on a pretty tight timeline. Uh, so we thought it necessary to bring in both A G M's and Frank, uh, to help make this decision between now and next summer. Uh, so the E S C includes, uh, again, both A G M's and myself. On the support side, we have staff from power planning, finance, rates, generation, and consultant help. Again, this is a a couple billion dollar decision in pretty uh pretty short order, so we're trying to give it every bit of attention that it deserves. On the business model context, uh, we wanted to speak just a little bit to what this is and what it isn't. So on the right, we've drawn out this circle of what we think of as the larger, you know, electric business model here. I should say power supply business model. It includes things like resource ownership, whether we own and operate our own resources, contract them out, or operate entirely through B P A. It includes things like market interaction. Are we out buying, selling, trading, uh, doing all the things that we do? And our B P A product itself. I do want to say what this is, is that this is a study of specifically that B P A product and how it fits uh within that larger business model. I do want to say that while we're trying to look at this, you know, very much within its own confines, all of these things, they're interconnected. One does impact the other, uh, and those are things that we'll be considering further down the line. So the deliverable on this, uh, we're going to be coming back with both quantitative and qualitative results. On the left, we have, you know, a rough outline of what the quantitative analysis on this might look like, which I can't quite read from that far over. Um, we have, you know, different products with different levels of B P A service. More expensive products come with additional levels of service, like we talked about the the car analogy before. Uh, yeah, they're all cars that are for sale. One is a box van, uh, the other one has, you know, a third row seats. And if you want to upgrade to leather and the L A wheels, that'll cost more as well. Uh, but they are all cars. Um, at the same time, we'll be looking at uh the non-federal resource costs that would be required to fill in those gaps that Aaron highlighted in the previous slide. And we'll also be looking at additional services and costs that would take to really uh maintain those portfolios. Thank you. Uh, on the right, we've called out some qualitative factors that we'd be looking at. I, a few of these could probably fall under a singular umbrella of local control. So we'll be thinking about how our product choice supports our strategic plan, how it supports advanced rates, how it supports local resource choice, and our ability to control where our power comes from and the attributes associated with those generators. So back on the timeline. Um, here we are. We're out in July. Uh, and we're talking about our B P A product choice. We're going to be back in September to talk about key assumptions and try to define some of those qualitative decision points. Uh, we're going to have uh some additional board engagement with the E S C over uh this time period as well. Uh, the E R S, I will be back with initial results in December and then final results in February. We'll be asking for a board review of management's product recommendation in April. And we'll be coming back again uh with a B P A product recommendation and action plan. That fall, we'll be looking for a board resolution authorizing the G M to sign the contract. And then, of course, uh, sign the contract that December. All right, so we've got a few bullets up here for discussion. Before we start, I did want to lay out what exactly it is that we're looking for, looking for from the board. Um, this is a lot. There's going to be a ton of information that comes through here. The financial stakes are huge. The implications for how we operate, you know, our side of the house are tremendous. It's a seventeen-year contract. Uh, even the cheapest contract is a couple billion dollars. So what we need from the board is to ask all your questions. Let us know what you think along the way, because when we get to next summer, we need to have no surprise. We'll have a decision that needs to be made, and we'll, we'll need to be there.
Over to us, or is there's more presentation?
So that's over to you. I I see Mindy's got her hand up.
All right, Mindy, please.
And guess I just have concerns about the timeline, seeing like it's really fast. So basically, in a year, we'll be making a decision. And uh, we keep talking about, like, talking about that we need to talk about the business model of the organization. And and also every month on our consent calendar, we're paying more money into Carmen Smith. So I just wonder, when do we have, when do we have time to have these kind of bigger conversations about what we want the business model to be like? Because it seems like what we're deciding a year from now kind of locks us in to um in the past.
So let me answer that in two parts. Frank, I know you've got time on the board agenda, I believe in September, to talk about resource ownership as part as it pertains to the business model. Um, with Carmen Smith, that's honestly a great example. We'll talk about that, uh, the dedicated resource stack that was at the bottom of those charts. Uh, legally speaking, Carmen Smith is a dedicated to load resource, and we are obligated uh from the start of this nice contract on into perpetuity uh to deliver that much power to B P A, whether or not Carmen Smith exists. So for us, we have the choice. We can maintain Carmen Smith, or we can go out and find that power elsewhere, but we do not have the option to buy that power from B P A.
Yeah, question about Carmen. I mean, that's like a whole other multi-year discussion, it seems like.
Yeah. Frank.
Yeah, I I was going to say that probably for this board to expect probably an ever, every other month kind of cadence around this issue. It'll get broken up into a number of different qualitative and quantitative factors. Um, one of those, for example, Commissioner Commissioner would be of these choices which do create business model flexibility and which do not. And how does, how is that realized? And some of it, um, Brian classified as local control. But, and that's why it relates to the business model. Um, but the implications of these choices, there are some that will maintain flexibility. There's some areas where it it will have less flexibility. So I think understanding the qualitative factors will be part of those discussions. Um, and I think, you know, really starting probably September to understand the board's perspective around what the risks of different business model choices are. And I think. of different business model choices are. And I think that, so Eugene has a long history of being in our own generation. So I'd say a long history, our entire existence. So, you know, back to 1911 or whenever it was that, that we started. We have recognized that there's a certain independence that we want to have around the, the resources that, that we procure. There are, there are costs to that. There are also risks if you move away from that. And those are the discussions that I want to tee up for the board in September. I think there are, so, because I, I looked at kind of the key question here. Or for us to really sort of launch into is what are the pros and cons qualitatively and quantitatively of leaning into Bonneville to a greater or lesser extent? That's, that's really the essence of what we want to get from the board. And I, I understand and I fully, I, I have thought about this for, since you hired me. I don't know. I didn't even know exactly how long ago that was. When we put together the plan, the strategic plan that we have now, a lot of it centered around preparing for this decision. And it got accelerated a little bit. I, you know, 2028 became 2025. So we, we have to, we have to look at that. And I do think there's some pretty clear, it, it, it would be easy to look at this chart and say, oh, well, let's just lean into Bonneville because they'll solve all our problems. It creates other kinds of risks and other kinds of costs. And so those are, that's where I suspect we'll start. And we'll use the business model as the, the way to sort of tee that up. And then we will progress through the various issues. And I just, to set the expectation, I, I probably will expect that every other month, probably at the least cadence, there might be somewhere we have three months in a row, we're sitting down for an hour talking about a specific issue. So, um, I think I can't think of on the electric side, any other decision that's more important for this, this board and this organization to make. And when, um, we talked about the executive steering committee, it wasn't just, oh, who has the titles to be on this? It's no, we, we better raise our right hand and say this, this is, this is a priority for us. And we're going to, to it. Brian didn't mention the community table piece of this, which is a public outreach part, but I can talk about that at another time.
Yes.
Um, couple, couple of quick questions. Um, do we have any indication from BPA on the costs of the I'm assuming that the farther right you go, the more expensive they become, but maybe.
That is correct. In fact, uh, Aaron and I were in a, a rates, you know, day workshop today. I love rates and all day workshop on BPA races a lot.
Yeah, I would say, so we're never going to have perfect information. Uh, Bonneville, so on anything, right? Like, we're going to be making decisions with some uncertainty on every aspect. Uh, what we're going to outline as part of the process for the rate design is what are rates going to look like in general? And what are going to be the principles for setting those rates for Bonneville? And I mean, I've already got a model set up to start looking at that. I'm going to incorporate all the changes that happen. Um, and we're going to do sensitivities on what happens if this piece moves or that piece moves. Um, so the goal is to really give the executive steering committee and the board an idea of like, what are the major things that might change and what happens if they change? Right? So, and, and we have a good sense of like, what those bounds will be.
When you talked about, uh, the, uh, Carmen Smith, uh, decision or, you know, our general generation overall. It's assumed on here that we, you know, keep that going. We have other contracts and such that are part of that mix. If we sign those then, does that also commit us to a certain level?
I think it feels, we've talked about what, so the, this, this team and the executive steering committee are ramping up. What Frank says is going to be engagement, I think.
The way you know is after the shower, right? Yeah, I'll be able to.
As long as we can hear you.
We, I, I think I will follow the executive team's lead on like the frequency and exact topics. Um, as staff, we are bringing rocks to the executive steering committee of like, hey, let's talk about this. The next one is qualitative. And I were literally just sitting and going through, like, what are the qualitative things? What, how do we want to think about these and rank them? What type of format of chart is most useful to talk about those? Um, for the dedicated resources, that is one of the topics we need to talk about with the executive steering committee and with the board, because they're the Bonneville statute and the way all this stuff intersects is weird. Uh, and so it's, it's, it is very simple on one hand and complicated on the other. I don't want to get wrapped around the axle on like a detail of it. I would say at a high level, um, our hydro resources are in our Bonneville contract as dedicated to load. They are there to serve until we go through some big Bonneville process. Other resources that are not those hydro are not dedicated to load. Uh, and they kind of roll out in a more simple fashion and that there's other decisions that falls.
So we can, resources that help us meet peak or
Yes.
or not. Um, but if we just with Carmen Smith, that's considered a dedicated load specifically. And if we, you know, continued with that project, which mostly point to yes, we put a lot of money into it, but there is still question there of, you know, can we complete the process? I mean, for me, that's one of the biggest risks. If something comes through and they say, hey, you can't even complete that. And then we're on the hook for that as a dedicated resource. So if that scenario happened and we couldn't complete it, um, we, are we, we buy on the open market?
Uh, I, I would love to have follow-up conversations on this. I'm going to look at.
Okay, all right, okay.
To, it gets.
I'm just trying to understand how it all.
You're asking good questions and, uh, I think it sounds like you want to jump in, but I don't want to get too in the weeds on this.
No, no, I think it's a really good question. I think, um, how, um, uh, these are traces before we were, we were going to go out and, um, by any kind of, uh, having new resource acquisitions. We'll go through a process that I, I think we've even talked to you about at the end of our integrated resource planning process. When we say, what are our needs? What are those? What is our resource strategy? So I think that, um, what, what Frank kind of, uh, alluded to earlier is, um, and, and Brian, you, when he had the three circles, you have your resource strategy, you have your markets, and then you have your BPA decision. And so we're really kind of teeing up the Bonneville decision first. And then we're going to move, we'll move into as now, and once we've made that decision, where are these gaps and how do we fill these gaps? And then.
I totally get that. I'm really just trying to understand the, the mechanics of like, are we stuck if it?
So the short answer.
Yes or no?
The short answer, you're not always stuck. There are statutory requirements to get the resources out. And to discuss those is complicated. So I'd rather leave that to another time. There are options.
Yes or no answer?
Well, you, but I think you already said, Brian, that Bonneville will not replace this. So we need to find.
Okay. So if, if we, you know, just from a risk mitigation perspective, is Bonneville able to take on more of our load? Or are we already locked into holding some amount of load?
At October this year, we, as of October this year, BPA's tier one system will be fully subscribed. And even if one of our dedicated hydro resources were to go away, we would not have access to additional tier one.
Okay, that's what I wanted. Thank you.
But I, I vote we have some follow-up conversations on this.
Yeah, I, I think there's more to dig into. We have about 20 minutes left for this, you know, topic as a whole. There was a lot of questions. So as we're thinking about agendas in the future, maybe we pack some more time in for this, Frank.
Yeah, I was going to just mention Carlson, that, that there, when we refer to a Bonneville allocation or a tier one allotment, that is the Bonneville access to the federal system that's cost based. Bonneville can also go out to the market and supply us with things we might need. It's called tier two. It's where they actually go as a procurer to fulfill an obligation that they might have depending on the product that we select. We will, we will not be stuck somewhere.
Okay.
But how we approach individual resources decisions would be different, for example, with Carmen Smith. And I think the background are listed out all the resources that, that are dedicated to load in, in EWEB. I believe those are all hydro, by the way. But another example would be the Seneca. Seneca is not dedicated to load. And therefore we have more of a free choice depending on, on what kind of business model we want to have. Or we, we want to use that to lead our own peak or that's, that's a little bit of a, of a, that's different than say a Carmen Smith. And so, well, and there's quite a few details relative to.
I don't want to take any time. But I think it would be really helpful to have an, our next go around, like risk is, risks associated and the flexibility or lack thereof of each of the kind of resources for, for my own understanding. That would be helpful. Okay, done.
Borowski.
Thank you. Sorry about the interruption earlier. Um, yeah, so for me, this is a, a topic that absolutely calls for work session type of a, a meeting where we can have a dedicated hour or hour and a half where it's more of a free flowing back and forth rather than ask us for our input and three minutes later we are done giving input. Um, even if that is over three or four months, I think it would be definitely something to look forward to. Um, so one of my questions would be, right now we have a model set up where we have control over quite a few things. And that gives us flexibility in the marketplace. I'm wondering if one of the things that you guys are going to be looking at is the the cost of moving to a different model from BPA and how that would affect some of our programs that we have going forward. So for example, one of the, one of the, uh, packages would have less risk, but right now we're using hedging to mitigate some of that risk. So is the cost that we're going to, that we would be paying to Bonneville for the less risk be more than what we're doing, paying to hedge our, our risk with our internal staff and, and the, the model that we're using today? Those are some of the questions that I would have to ask when we're talking about cost, you know, this Bonneville pro, product costs us this much more. But right now we're doing some of those things already. We have people in the building that are doing that. Um, and if we go away from that one, are we losing, are we losing people? And are we losing, you know, if, if we go to one model, we may lose our power trading department altogether, right? And so what are the costs and benefits of all of those? So those are the types of questions that I would like to know moving forward. Um, well, you know, we've already got the infrastructure in place and how much is it costing us and how much more would it cost us if we let BPA do that work for us?
Those are all questions for a future meeting I'm hearing, rather than questions field right now. Any comments on that before I go to? Just that the math on that would be really tough and I'm pretty good at head math, but, uh, let me come back to you with better.
Yeah, Frank. I, I would just say that we, we have got to look at a lot of these decisions holistically and based on different scenarios. So to, to John's point, if, if you look at this over the long term, you may be sort of reducing risk or cost in one area, at the same time transferring that cost or risk to another area. And I think that you have to almost look at this end to end as opposed to, um, and, and not based on where we are today versus the past, but where we are today versus where we think we're going to be in five, 10, 15 years. Because it will be different looking forward than it is backwards. And so, uh, we have to do it in that context. And one example of that is an organized market in the Northwest. Um, that is a much different requirement for a trading operation than it is looking backwards, looking forward. It's just, it's a different, um, different way of operating. So we have to look at holistically across. So John's, John's point is absolutely correct. Mindy's point is absolutely correct around the fact that it has to be looked at altogether.
Well, and organized market to the topic of discussion.
Yes, yes. And what, what that, what that means.
I think it does support Borowski's proposal of a work session in this topic.
And it's, we do have a work session scheduled in October.
Great. You catch that, John? Work schedule, great. Uh, Brian?
So, yeah, I, this analogy I have is there's a group of neurosurgeons asking the patient for advice, medical advice. So I'm sorry, but I know what I don't know. Um, I got a thousand questions, so this thing is going to, a work session is going to be great. But things like, yeah, I look where we are on the rate trajectory right now. We're the only local entity that generates, but we're also the highest. Everybody we, we've surpassed Lane Electric, E-Pod, everybody. We're the highest electric thing now. And if we go and our, our capacity to meet load growth, because I know this in your plan, you say we're going to meet it through conservation for the first two years, then we're going to have to find more resources. Would we find those within Bonneville or do we find those outside in our own market? Because we have this 95% carbon free. And, uh, and so I'm going to want to know all about that and all about, um, and Bonneville told us that they were going to give us the capacity we lost out of Lieberg, that tier one or tier two?
Uh, that is tier, yeah, tier one. We, so we got the official letter, um, on Lieberg last month. Um, so yeah, the next rate period will be getting replacement power at tier one.
So that's tier one. They're, they're replacing that, that, that.
Yep.
Okay, since I've got a thousand questions and I know where we're going, so I'll, I'll wait for the work session, but I'll.
See, yeah, that I would say the one thing that we didn't get to into today. So you mentioned kind of the load growth piece and this like tier one, tier two. That is a separate decision than the product. So, uh, we'll talk about it more. There's a lot of material to cover, but, um, essentially the, our product decision comes first next year. And then literally a full year later, we say, how do we want to serve load growth? So this product decision is, who do I want to manage this within your risk variability, beating peaks? Do we want to do it or do we want to do it? How many additional services do we want to get from Bonneville? And then the following year is going to be a decision. Okay, do we, if we need resources to serve load growth in the future, do we want to do that or do we want to? So there's multiple pieces here.
Frank. I was going to get back to that was all of these have to do with how we want to how we want to position the various futures for the organization. Because what? And again, it's how much are we going to lean into Bonneville? Do either take care of our load growth, but we would, might be looking at this much differently. If we were dealing with lots of data centers and other kind of just explosive load growth in our future, maybe versus, you know, modest load growth through electrification or other things. These are going to have to be scenarios that, that we look at. When I said looking forward, looking forward is different than looking backward and load growth as a part of that. And the product choice does matter because what it does is create flexibility for us to partially do that or lean into Bonneville to do that. And so, um, we have to, as part of this work, create some different futures looking forward and then test those futures with different sensitivities and product options and and business model. So, uh, it's going to be a great big three dimensional matrix that, uh, the brain surgeons are going to have to figure out what colors they are. And, but I'm just, I'm just kidding. This is going to take a lot of work. I think it's manageable. Um, but let's be prepared that we're just going to have to put some time, effort. And we're going to have to have lots of exchanges of what about this? What about that? I don't get this. I get that. Um, so that when we get to next year, that you're comfortable. If we say this is why we think and where we think we should go, you're okay with the logic behind that. And so is a guy in the back, back of the room. Calling you out.
About the, uh, Walterville, if we can I'll get in or that boat has sailed. So we haven't made a decision on multiple beliefs. But also it's in the mix.
Talk through that. Bonneville has a very specific set of criteria or a replacement of a tier one dedicated resource. I'm not sure whether we have the, the runway to be able to do that by the deadline that's been created, which I believe is this fall. They're all shaking their head. And what kind of criteria we could actually create or not create within that window? And even then it is a submitted request to the Bonneville administrator. So and, and other utilities can weigh in on support or not. I mean, there's, we, we, Lieberg was pretty clear. We were decommissioning. There was a number of reasons it was uneconomically, there's, there was a lot of rationale for that. Well, we'll get, we'll get back to you on that.
I have a few questions that I, you know, have to dive into, but the, the questions that come up to me when we start having this conversation. I think you said the contract is seven years, is that right?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Yeah, 2028 through 2045.
Wow.
My retirement date is 2046, so I'll have the pleasure of doing this again, I hope.
Condolences. So just a couple of questions that I, that I have about our assumption about heat pump uptake. Is that a significant driver here? And I'm not even thinking about electrification, I'm just thinking about uptake of heat pumps within people that are using like resistance heat. I know the state has like a statutory goal now of like 500,000 new heat pumps by 2030, right? I don't know what proportion of that is in our territory, but is that significant or not? I don't know.
I want to jump in on that one because the board approved a demand side potential assessment study. Those are the types of things that we're doing a deeper dive with a consultant on now. And so those are the, we're trying to gain an understanding of our service territory to have a richer understanding of that, which we hope will help us understand the potential for conservation and maybe get a sense also for the electrification side as well.
Very, yes. So that was my next question was the timeframe for the completion of that study? Because that seems super critical to any kind of decision in June of 25, right?
Yes, the, the current timeline is getting that done at just the initial deliverables at, in December. And so these timelines don't line up very well currently to feed that in. That said, our resource acquisition strategy, our strategy to supplement the Bonneville products is still up to E-Web. So E-Web still have, will be able to invest in conservation regardless of what product we choose. So we can, as we have load growth in the future, we will need to supplement any Bonneville product that we choose among these five options because we've had load growth. How E-Web chooses to go about meeting that load growth is our strategy to decide.
But doesn't, it's not only how much load growth we have, it's also how much, doesn't that affect the peaks as well, right? If we invest a lot in consultation.
I'm going to, I'm going to piggyback on what Ben is saying.
Oh, I, I was just going to say, part of that assessment is to do an assessment of the potential demand response and the, the customer side of what we consider resources, which does get back to this. If we can, if we can have the opportunity to manage that, then that impacts the amount that we might lean in to either our own resources, supply side resources or Bonneville. So they are related in the degrees of which the sensitivities start to take place. So that's, that's why it does matter. And.
Better information in December and hopefully we'll be ready to just play the tools right, right away and start performing, thinking about a June decision for a seventeen year commitment.
And, and I will, so I want to note on the seventeen year commitment. Yes, but there is a product switching option. It was a brief, brief sentence of the memo, but like, we have the ability to change paths. I will also say, I have so many things over there. We have follow up conversations. To, to Ben's point on the demand response, the, a lot of this analysis comes down to, we're looking at Bonneville products, which like, as you get for service, it's like, well, it's a Bonneville rate construct versus what can E-Web do separately? How did that, how's that fit together? Yeah, so it's both this kind of quantitative and qualitative pieces that we have to fit together in all of this. So your question on like, how's demand response program fit in? Like, well, is, are we comparing it to a Bonneville rate that says this is how much you pay for demand? Or is it E-Web, we're going out, we're buying capacity on the market and that's our weighted cost? So there's, there's these different pieces that fit together. We will have options to switch. And while you feel like you're being innovative, we're talking about this, like, we are thinking about business model, like, we, our heads are in this.
Yeah.
And so we've got diagrams of like, I don't know what, like, what you've shared so far, but like, there is a range of Bonneville customers with a range of business models, a range of resources. And so I think there's some pieces of this discussion that you probably haven't seen yet that will help to lay the groundwork that you want to, quite so like untethered.
Just so you know, it's not an, an infinite ability to switch products. It's a one, it's a one time ability to switch products.
Well, I just want to say, I think it's been, we, we came, we outlined what, where Bonneville is today. And it's really exciting that you guys are this engaged because you could tell we are as well. And it is such a really important, really important conversation. And what I also really liked is I think as each of you spoke, you know, I wrote notes to make sure that we, we can follow up. We, we need to know what are those specific areas that you want us to start addressing first? And so, so I think we have some really good takeaways. Frank?
One quick question. So we're talking about rate design too. Does it matter what we choose for BPA that's going to then affect rate design?
Frank, can I give a specific example on that one?
Yeah, I'm going to say it does. Let me quickly get this out. The rate design, the initial part of the rate design that, that I think that I want to understand with the board is more fundamental principle initially. But eventually how you design your rates creates the flexibility to be able to do some of these demand side resources and other things and, and look at cross subsidies. And specifically, do you want to have rates that guide customer behavior? Or do you want to have rates that are pure cost based? I mean, there's, there's some fundamental questions like that and those do, those are impacted eventually. But I think we can have some initial conversations before that.
So let me, a very specific example of that would be whether or not we have market exposure. And if we have a low following product, the price that we pay for using a little bit more or a little bit less is based on a forecast. It tends to be very soft compared to actual market prices during an extreme weather event. Our largest customer, we have a contract with them that gives them market exposure if they use more or less than their contract. This past winter, they lost power. They lost many, many millions of dollars in operations. But because of this contract, they'd lost power during an extreme weather event. And we were able to essentially compensate them at the real time price for the power that they weren't using of their contract. So they made several million dollars back on their power bill. Now that didn't, that did not pay for their losses. But that was a nice benefit and that was many times greater than anything we could have gotten from a low following contract.
I'm just going to nickname this the OMG presentation because this is kind of like, wow, all this is in front of us and I know that it's, it was just an agenda, oh, BPA products. And I know you probably all walked in going, oh, this, but there, there's, there's a lot here. And it's kind of a pulling back of the curtain saying, we've got to roll up our sleeves. Makes metaphors there, but roll over sleeves and get to it.
Well, and I'm, I'm hearing interest in doing that. It sounds like there's, you know, board interest in spending the time there. So that by the time we get to June, we're all on the same page and going in the same direction. All right, well, unless there are any really important last comments to drop in here, I'll propose we cut this off so we can wrap up by nine forty. Anything from you, Borowski, are we, we good? All right. All right, so then we'll go into our next item, which is future board agendas. Thanks, team.
There's, there are a number of things on here, some related to things we just talked about. I, I think in the context of looking at priorities, that we will make some adjustments to this. I'll go through with the executive team. Different key stakeholders, what some of this might look like. So, and it may include starting to fill in 2025.
Okay. Any questions or comments on future agendas? All right, then the last item, board wrap up.
Comments, questions? Nothing from Brown. Anything from you for board wrap up? Nope.
Okay. I, I have just a couple of items and I'll be very quick. One, the AV improvements in this room are awesome. Thank you for making that happen to the whole team of people that I'm sure took, to make that happen. The question about authorization to spend that may have been some, you know, partially spent already. I do wonder if we should consider an urgent procurement policy where, you know, we front load some spending limit for things that are really time sensitive, like it sounds like this one was. I just want to throw that on the table for something for us to consider. And the last thing is I want to apologize to the board and to the staff who are here. I've run this tape so many times in my head during tonight. We had a very incredibly rude, completely unacceptable testimony tonight. And in hindsight, I should have invited that gentleman to leave. I appreciate our security who are all clearly ready to do something, but also following my lead, which I really appreciated. But if, should something like that happen again, I will promptly invite somebody who uses that language and who attacks our staff in that way to leave. So I apologize for not doing that. I, I was following my instinct and in hindsight, I'm like, I think, I think that guy needed to go. Anyway. Thank you all for giving me grace and next time we won't allow that kind of behavior again. That's all I have. Thank you.